Welcome to the August 14, 2012, meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Weaver.
Joining with me in our flagsmint, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please remain standing for this evening's invocation. As we gather today to deliberate the issues before this council, let us be mindful of the fragility of life in our neighborhoods for which we work so hard to maintain and grow and flourish. Let us pray for the comfort and recovery of the people in Iran who have been struck by a severe and devastating earthquake, the people of the Philippines who have been the victims of record floods, the people of Syria who are victims of civil war, and the people around our nation who have been victims of senseless violence these last few weeks. Let us remember that in prayer, we give thanks for every moment we have with each other and spend those moments filled not with hate or judgment or indignation, but to harmonize and collaborate and leave our place on earth better than when we found it. George Santayana wrote once, "There is no cure for birth and death save to enjoy the interval." And enjoy it we must by loving one another and overcoming dark moments that surround us with that love. Let us remember those suffering and who have perished and work to better ourselves and elevating ourselves and others around us.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
Agenda for the August 14 Plan 12 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, August 9, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Next is an agenda preview for the meetings of August 21, 2012.
Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority for August 21, we have no business agenda items. That afternoon commencing at 3:00 p.m., we do have a Glendale City Council and Housing Authority meeting, public hearing. This is Director of Community Services and Parks, California Municipal Finance Authority's proposed issuance of approximately $20 million in tax-exempt revenue bonds in support of a Casa de la Paloma, a Glendale affordable senior housing residential facility owned and operated by Southern California Presbyterian Homes. That afternoon as well, we do have a special Glendale City Council meeting, and this is a public hearing. This is Director of Community Development. This is regarding Stage 1 and 2 design review for Bloomingdale's, which is located at 101 South Brand Boulevard. That evening for the City Council meeting, which commences at 6:00 p.m., we have a number of consent items. Director of Public Works, this is approval of a final map of tract #65444, which is a four-unit new condominium subdivision located at 460 West California Avenue. Director of Public Works, regarding approval of a final map of tract 71487. This is for a five-unit new condo subdivision located at 624 Geneva Street. Chief of Police, Glendale Police Department's participation in the County of L.A. Real Estate Fraud Prosecution Trust Fund. City Auditor, this is the Fiscal Year 2012 Audit Committee Annual Report. We have two items under Action. Director of Community Development, update on implementation of the Glendale Fresh Air Ordinance. This is options for facilitating HUKA use and options for addressing secondhand smoke in multifamily dwellings. That will be moved from this evening to next week. Director of Information Services, Chief of Police, and the Fire Chief, this is an upgrade of the city's Glendale radio system to comply with the APCO Project 25 standard. And lastly, we have a hearing. Director of Public Works, this is regarding the 2012 Congestion Management Program Certification process. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next.
Next, at 3:00 B. is nomination assignment to replace Young Yu, member of Design Review Board Number 1, who is no longer a Glendale resident. This was the original nomination of Councilmember Weaver.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Item 4 on the agenda, City Council and Staff Comments.
Staff, City Council Comments.
I just wanted to clarify, Cho, were you going to formally announce that the other item on the agenda is being moved to next week, or bad enough? I just want people, if anybody's here on the smoking ordinance, to understand why we're not doing it is Mr. Manukian was one of the two people that wanted to discuss it again. That's why it's on the agenda, so we're holding it over for him to be here.
That about sums it up.
So the smoking ordinance will come for the council next week. Friedman.
Just a couple things. First of all, last week, we had a visit of the mayor of Bowen County in Korea. Bowen's one of the cities that I visited when I went for our Sister City program, and it's a new friendship city with Glendale. And several of us were able to meet them and greet them here at City Hall. But I also attended an MOU signing, a memorandum of understanding signing, between Bowen and Glendale Community College. And really, the big benefit, one of the big benefits of having these sister cities, particularly the Korean sister cities, is that they're very interested in sending their students to college at Glendale Community College, because it's difficult for them to get into school in the United States. And what they've done is they've signed these MOUs so that they're guaranteed a certain number of slots should they want it and qualify at GCC. And the benefit for GCC is huge, because when GCC takes California students, they're only allowed to take a certain amount of money. The tuition is capped at whatever the state level is. But when they take international students, they pay what's, you know, basically full freight, and they're paying the full tuition, which is much, much higher than what a California student would pay. And so that money then can be used by GCC to pay for the education that they're subsidizing for the California students, to pay for everything that they need to operate. So it's very, very important to them to be able to attract these international students. And it's very competitive. The community colleges all around the country are really trying to attract these students to help pay for the educations of the American students and for their day-to-day costs. So I'm glad that this was able to happen, and hopefully it will be something that's beneficial to GCC moving forward. Secondly, and I'm sure my colleagues will talk about it, I know we have a video, I attended several of the National Night Out locations, and I want to commend everyone who participated, which was a lot of you out there. I saw just tons of people out on the streets getting to know their neighbors, enjoying the somewhat cooler evening weather. And, oh, the video is up on the screen. I'm sorry if I took another council member's thunder. I didn't know they were going to roll that. There's no audio, but here we are, talking to people at National Night Out, and there were lots of crowds. One location, Royal Boulevard, that I visited even had food trucks. And the food trucks, I think, pretty much sold out of food. By the time I left, they were out of most of their food, so it was really a great success. And people got to talk to law enforcement and voice whatever concerns they had or suggestions up close. There were police officers at most of the places that I went to, and I think at most of our locations. And it was just a really great way to get people out to where they could get to know their neighbors if they didn't know them, and to be able to find out ways that they could help fight crime, and to watch out for each other, to find out what was happening in the city. And that's one of our police dogs, our canines, a very enthusiastic participant. And it was a huge success, and I know that all of my colleagues were out as well. So again, I just want to thank everyone who participated, particularly the people who hosted those house parties or made all of that happen and facilitated that. It's such a great event, and I'm really glad that it's been growing and growing and growing in the city. Lastly, last week, last week, it was actually just a couple nights ago, ABC 7 did a news report on some capital projects that you may have seen around Glendale. Right now, I think there's one school that's under construction, but there's going to be 18 of our Glendale public schools that are having work done around them to increase safety for the children going to those schools, to make it easier for them and safer for them to get to school, to improve the traffic circulation, to reduce the crossing distances that students have to cross when they cross our streets, and basically just to make our schools safer for people who walk and bike to school. And one of the people who's led this effort is Kara Sergeal, who's really a wonderful activist and who's part now of the Safe Routes to Schools group that raises money and helps advocate for creating ways that are safer for students to get to and from school, as well as to discourage the use of automobiles, which just increases traffic around schools and makes it less safe for those students who are walking to school, and also to create safe environments so that parents feel safer letting their kids walk and bike to school. Because we all know childhood obesity and obesity in this country is a huge problem, and there's a direct link between when kids stopped walking and biking to school and started driving to school and the obesity rates going up. So what we're trying to do, particularly in our schools that are in such a built-out environment that were never engineered for 1,000 cars showing up every morning to drop off their kids, is to find ways for people to be able to help their kids get to school without having to drive them and to make that safe. So KABC 7 did a really nice story on our efforts and on the grant money that we received and the construction that's underway, and I'd like to just take a minute and show it That wasn't an official part of-
A recent travel survey suggests that 40% of all the trips we take in this country are two miles or less from home, yet only 2% of these trips are accomplished by bicycle. A lot of people say it's just not safe. Well, New at 5 eyewitness news reporter Lori Corbin discovered a Glendale resident who decided to change that in her neighborhood.
During the summer, road construction picks up, but when school starts, traffic can get heavier.
We're doing a lot of construction at all four corners of the school in order to reduce the distance that students, parents have to cross safely.
Richardson D. White Elementary is the first of 18 schools under a $1 million transformation project in Glendale.
We have a terrible record when it comes to collisions between pedestrians and cars, and we need to reclaim our streets.
Councilwoman Laura Friedman is working on just that, getting enormous help from local resident Kara Sergeal, who spearheaded a program to take back the suburbs and make things safer for pedestrians.
I polled together a group of parents. We started collecting data about what we were seeing, and about the same time as we were doing that, the city decided to apply for the Safe Routes to School Grant.
Glendale got that grant, using it to bump out curves, improve sidewalks, add stop signs, striping, and educate parents on new rules. To say Kara was tenacious about her goal is an understatement, enlisting the help of Department's head of the City of Glendale, also the school district and the PTA, her own faculty at the school, and Walk Bike of Glendale.
We now have a group called Walk Bike Glendale, which is completely grassroots, made up of our citizens, who are saying, "We want this, and we'll do whatever we can do to make it happen."
And it's working. Every Friday, about 100 children participate in a walking school bus with faculty and parents, while many families are starting bicycle trains to school. Sergeal's advice to those wanting to help their town.
If it's something you're passionate about, staying with it and not just letting it go because things don't happen overnight.
Lori Corbin, ABC 7 Eyewitness News.
So again, my congratulations and my thanks to Kara and to all the members of Walk Bike Glendale and everyone who's participated in this, and particularly to our staff who went out and was able to procure the grant and has been doing all this work, and of course, to the council, who's been working to make traffic safety a priority in the city for several years now. I think all that's finally starting to come to fruition, and we're starting to see some real changes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I also attended several of the National Night Out events. In fact, I was stalking you for a few of them, shadowing you at the Pacific Park and then Nibley Park, then I was able to head up to the Montecito Park neighborhood. Three parks, okay. And it was a lot of fun. And again, the point that we're trying to get out is, please be sure to be aware of your surroundings, meet your neighbors, and if anything seems out of place or out of the norm, let your neighbors know, let the police know. They are here to help. And it's only through careful monitoring of your own neighborhood that we can really put a clamp down on some of the crime. And a lot of the arrests that were made in the northwest area and in Rossmoyn over the summer earlier were due to alert neighbors. So thank you to the police department, who gave escorts to me, escorted me from one to the next, and all the neighbors that came out. Nibley Park had a great showing of Puss in Boots out there, which was really a wonderful setting for the neighborhood. So excellent, and thank you to everyone involved. The next item that I'd just like to mention is I attended a no, well, I shouldn't say no on 710, on a 710 tunnel community liaison committee meeting in La Cañada last night. Concurrent with that was a City of Pasadena City Council meeting, a special city council meeting, held to discuss the 710 extension and tunnel. And it was, it was great news, because it seems now that we've reached our critical mass, and the residents of Pasadena are uniting, and the city council is uniting in opposing any extension that involves heavy infrastructure on the 710 tunnel, on the 710 freeway, on the 710 thoroughfare that they want to plow through the neighborhoods, whether it's above ground or below ground. To be quite honest, it looks like Metro MTA, on whose board I sit, grossly underestimated the community opposition to this. I want to thank my colleagues, those who voted early on for our resolution opposing a 710 tunnel. We were one of the early voices approximately two and a half years ago, going on record opposing the 710 tunnel. That has now caught fire. Pasadena, Pasadena is only limited by a decade-old proposition that the community voted on. The holes in the 710 tunnel are just, are just becoming more and more apparent, to the extent where they're giving wrong information to MTA board members, meaning myself, as to the ultimate cost of that. The solution to the 710 is to put the freight from the ports of Los Angeles on rail and rail it, ship it out to an inland port, and to make very minor infrastructure improvements to the gap area between the 210 and the 710. Some street widening, signal synchronization, off-ramp and on-ramp widening, and an investment in transit as well, both the Gold Line, rapid buses. That's the only way that this is going to work out. And I'd like to applaud my colleagues, all those in the city that have supported the no-on 710. And just, just wait and see. We've reached a mass, as I said, a critical mass, where all hell is going to start breaking loose. And the hell is going to be those consultants who are figuring on how quickly they were going to spend the $900 million only for the studies, when they realize that's going to be taken away from them. That's where the hell's going to break loose. This was their full employment measure for the next five years. That's going to be taken away. And the winners are going to be the residents of L.A. County and those folks who believe in transit and a true 21st century model approach to freight movement and transportation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Weaver.
Just want to make it clear again. I took no position on the 710 extension. Premature. I spent a career in engineering and project management, doing environmental documents, building projects. I said it was premature to take any position till environmental documentation is done. So when I keep reading the council, it was the majority of the council. I'm neutral at this point. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to start by talking about National Night Out and thanking Sergeant Gilkerson and his community-based policing crew, who, what was very obvious to me as I went to the different locations, Pacific Park, Nibley Park, et cetera, was how well-known the individual officers were among the neighbors that were out. I mean, you could tell they were very familiar with the, with the officers and almost, you know, you could see, you could sense a friendship there. So I think the details doing a great job. For those that don't know, the city's broken up into different patrol areas, and then you have the community-based police that work on, on issues that are of neighborhood concern. Then the next comment is about the Korean mayors. It's always great to meet them and exchange information, and yes, I think it's more than just a boon to Glendale College. I think a result of our friendships with these cities, I think we're going to see some, some investment in Glendale coming from South Korea. Then the third thing is a fire that took place literally on my hillside, not my individual home, or just a few homes down from where I live up in the Glendale Hills. What a magnificent job the fire department did. They were there in no time. I don't know exactly when the fire started, but they immediately responded. The hillside was pretty much at this much of an angle, fully engulfed in fire. They had to fight it from the lower portion of the street and then send crews up to the, to another street, much higher. They called in the helicopters, and it was just very impressive. So every time I hear people criticizing the firefighters and what an easy job they, they have, I wish they'd have been there that particular day. It was super hot, probably about 2:30 or 3:00 in the afternoon. They had their full regalia on. The heat from the fire was just intense, and basically, they saved this older person's house. The corner was scorched just a little bit, but the entire side, the entire hillside went up in flames. But their quick reaction and just the way they, they handled everything was just truly impressive. And then they stayed on the site to make sure that no hot spots kicked up again. So on behalf of the neighbors, I want to thank the fire department for doing an excellent job. Any comments from the staff?
Okay. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Next is items following the routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Mr. Mayor, before I make a motion, I just, and I don't want to pull the item, I just wanted to point out to the public that there is an item of particular interest on here, which is the formation of a new community garden on Geneva Street. This will be next to the Habitat for Humanity Housing Project, but it'll be a garden that's open to the entire community. This is the third of the newer sort of model of community garden, although there are older community gardens in the city. But the first two, which are both on Monterey, were such a huge success, and we have such a long waiting list of people wanting community garden spots, that I was very happy to see that the city was able to find remnant land that has a right-of-way on it so it couldn't be built on to use in this way to give people in our urban settings, people who live in multifamily housing, who don't have access to their own yard, the ability to grow fruits, vegetables, flowers if they want, and to have their own little piece of earth. So I don't know if there's already a waiting list or if they can apply. There is a waiting list, and people can still apply and get on the waiting list if you're interested. You can contact Neighborhood Services, and they can hook you up if you're interested. It is on Geneva, and I want to thank the staff for, for making that happen, and for the council for their support of the community garden projects. With that, I'll move the consent items.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Najarian. Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next is oral communications, but this will be a three-minute community announcement portion. We will revisit the full five-minute portion of oral communications at the conclusion of all city business.
Okay, I have one card.
Good evening, community of Glendale. My name is Adam Cloyes. On behalf of Glendale's Wellness Works Welcome Home Veterans Program, Mr. Mayor, I would once again like to thank you, the City Council of Glendale, and the Glendale community for allowing me these few minutes to brag about Wellness Works right here in Glendale. When I found Wellness Works, it had already been their mission to serve local veteran community for nearly two years. By offering a wide range of time-honored therapeutic options for healing warriors with complicated and sometimes less obvious wounds, now Wellness Works has been treating the wounds of veterans for over four years. And last week, the Kaiser Family Foundation recognized Wellness Works with a generous contribution for their work with treating the veteran community. I'm very proud of them. I've seen them in action, and I know, I know they deserve it. Last month, my dad stood here and welcomed all the veterans and their families to come out to the free barbecue at Wellness Works on 540 Broadway on the third Saturday of every month. That brought a huge turnout. This Saturday is the barbecue for August. I expect a few more vets and their families might hear that hamburger or hot dog or salmon burger calling. Vets and their families can also choose up to two treatments per person. In my own experience, after nearly 13 years at a job that requires you to understand the true meaning of the words 60-pound rucksack, I was beginning to get shorter. But now, two years after I've traded in my 60-pound rucksack for some good old-fashioned massage, acupuncture, and yoga, I'm getting a little taller. My back is steadily becoming even straighter. So if you know a veteran who requires more healing than what they can get from the VA alone, we hope to see them between 11:30 and 3:00 this Saturday at Wellness Works on 540 Broadway. Come for the acupuncture, stay for the salmon burger. See details at wellnessworksglendale.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I'm very impressed with the salmon burger concept. Good, what a good idea that is. Okay, next, please.
Next, under Action Items, at 8:00 A. is City Treasurer, regarding City Treasurer's annual review of the city portfolio for fiscal year ending June 30, 2012. At 8:00 A. 1 is a motion to review and accept the City Treasurer's annual investment report.
Mr. Cho.
Yes, sir. This is the, the regular report that we get, and I will leave it to Mr. Bruckey to give you the less-than-stellar news concerning our financial markets.
Don't spoil it.
Sorry.
Mayor Quintero, fellow council members, I would like to present for council review and acceptance the annual report of the city portfolio for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2012. It was another year of frustration and disappointment in the treasurer's office. As with other fixed-income portfolios, our city portfolio was negatively impacted by historically low interest rates in the marketplace. Fed Chairman Bernanke continued to keep interest rates extremely low, waiting for the jobs market to improve. Trouble is, the wait is now in its fourth year. The jobs market is dependent on a certain level of sustained growth in the economy. It takes an economic growth of 2.5% to reduce unemployment in the country. However, GDP just grew 1.8 in 2011, and 1.9 and 1.5 for the first and second calendar quarters of 2012. In other words, interest rates in our marketplace haven't increased because the economy could not muster enough growth to improve the jobs picture. Let's talk about some of the numbers. First off, let's look at size. The city portfolio ended the fiscal year at $393 million, up $8 million from the last quarter, but down $16 million from the $409 million at the end of last year. Now, the low-interest-rate environment that started with the financial meltdown in 2008 continued to keep our performance in check for yet another year. As disappointing as it may be, it should come as no surprise, then, that interest earnings struggled and ended the year at $4.3 million, down $1.5 million from the previous year. Now, the rate of return for the city portfolio fell 34 basis points to 1.09% for the year. As we said, these historically low interest rates impact all fixed-income portfolios. We are not alone. Even the state pool to the local agency investment fund, with over $40 billion, finished the fiscal year down 11 basis points to average 38 basis points for the year. Let's put some pictures to, to these words. Let's look at the portfolio. We've got here four line items that we keep track of in the office. We're looking at annual comparisons. The portfolio, let's start with the portfolio over the last three years. It has dropped from $448 million in 2010 to $409 million in 2011 to the current $393 million. Now, folk have come up to me and said, "Does that mean that the, that the portfolio is losing money?" I says, "No, we're not losing money." I says, "No, we're not losing money. We're spending money." Basically, since the city portfolio is a pool of all the dollars that the city has, both for operating funds as well as for capital expenditures, also including special and enterprise funds, what we have here are dollars flowing out of the portfolio. More dollars are flowing out than coming in. And so those dollars are being spent on planned capital improvement projects, equipment needs, as well as infrastructure. The next two lines, interest earnings and rate of return, are actually performance numbers. And there again, you can see that interest earnings shadows the rate of return. In the year 2010, interest earnings were $8.5 million. Last year, they were $5.8 million, and we finished June of, the fiscal year, June of 2012 at 4.3. It's interesting that the 4.3 is a little more than half of the 8.5 million a couple years ago, but if you look at the rate of return, it explains it all. A couple of years ago, the rate of return was 1.89% for the portfolio, and here it is for the past year at 1.09. Now, the weighted average maturity is something we keep track of to give us a quick look at our liquidity position. What we have here is, in our portfolio being fixed income, and the intent of the portfolio is to generate cash flow to work in concert with the budget. The average life, if you will, of the portfolio, we would like to keep it between one and a half years to two years, which you see in a low-interest-rate environment, is the gradual creeping up from 18.8 months for the year ending June of 2010 to 22 and a half months to the current 23 months. Nothing to get worried about. Again, it's still within our guidelines, as it creeps up towards perhaps two and a half would kind of indicate that maybe we ought to be looking at something. Let's move to a rate of return comparisons. Again, as we indicated earlier, the portfolio fell from 1.43 the previous year to the current And honestly, for the last several months of the fiscal year, I was a little concerned if, in fact, we would finish over 1. I know it sounds odd to take comfort in the fact that we actually finished at 1.09, but it hasn't been easy out there. The state pool, as we said earlier, last year was at 49 basis points. For those watching on TV, that translates to a tad less than a half a percent. This year, it's, the state pool is at 38 basis points, which is 3/8 of 1%. It's just interesting, after four years, we haven't stabilized rates. Rates actually continue to slide. The two-year treasuries is a good indication of that. This is not a fund. It's not a pool. It's simply a 12-month average of the treasuries. But it's so important in our marketplace, and our marketplace, again, goes from overnight dollars all the way out to $5, and that's it. The two-year covers just about everything up to around three years. We could, last year, go out and buy a U.S. Treasury and get a little more than a half a percent on our money. This past year, we could go out and buy that same U.S. Treasury and expect to get a little bit more than a quarter of a percent. Asset allocation. We're going to be taking a look at the composition of our city portfolio. This tells folk where we're investing those dollars. We're comparing current year to the previous year. The pie charts indicate a sameness here. We look for sameness in a fixed-income portfolio. You don't want to look for quick and large changes. Let me just highlight a couple of areas that we focused on this year to improve yield. The olive-green piece of pie, the little slice there, is corporate notes, and we effectively doubled our holdings of corporate notes from seven the previous year to 15% of our portfolio, which is our portfolio limit for corporates in the portfolio. We did that at the beginning of this calendar year, when there seemed to be a window of opportunity, when the two- and the five-year treasuries continued to slide, Europe was making noises, and corporate treasurers went out to market because they figured rates couldn't get much lower than this. It was an opportunity for us as well, and that helped us keep above the 1% return for the year. I might point out, too, I guess it's like a burnt orange, the LEF. Last year, it was at 37% of the portfolio. This year, it's at 24, I believe that number is, and that's a result of we closing down the LEF account that we had designated for the redevelopment funds. That happened in February of this year. We reallocated those dollars, a bunch of it, to negotiable CDs. Investment maturities, another way of looking at the portfolio, one that we look at. This provides a little more detail than simply looking at the weighted average maturity for the portfolio. It spreads the investments in the portfolio over five years, gives us an indication as to what the liquidity position is. Immediately, this tells us that we're in real good shape as far as liquidity, with almost 39% of our portfolio maturing within one year, and a lot of that within 30 to 60 I should mention, at this time, usually, at this time of the year, I present not only the performance of the portfolio, but we also look for approval of the city investment policy. We're going to hold off on that for a few weeks for a couple of reasons. Number one, we're going to come back with some suggestions to improve our options within the policy, and we're really holding out for a replacement for the LEF account at the state pool. I went to a luncheon a few weeks ago, and I heard the county treasurer, and he reminded the group, and particularly me, that they have an investment pool that they operate out of LA County for all the cities and local agencies within the county that want to participate. I can tell you that when I looked at the returns, they were 85 to 90 basis points. I think they finished the year at 81 or 83. We've got, we'll also have to prepare a resolution to present to council so that we can get one of those accounts open. I think that's going to do a lot to cover the dismal returns that we're getting in the one-year and the two-year range. This is simply an accounting, a reckoning. These are the bucks that we have under management of the office, total city investment, total dollars, oh, total city portfolio investments as well as cash. The $393 million, and cash on hand in our bank accounts of approximately $2 million. A total of $394 million compared to the previous year of $417 million. And last but not least, as far as managing dollars, this is a chart that's going to show the redevelopment dollars slash successor agency holdings, and we could start at the bottom and proceed up. Normally, we would have been responsible and always reported GRA bond proceeds, and we would manage those dollars until they were spent. Well, there's, and we're still doing that. We're managing the dollars for the tax allocation bonds of 2010 and 2011. In addition, the early part of June, the state, I guess through the county, turned around and sent us an installment on our ROPS dollars, and for the folk in TV land, that would be the dollars to cover the recognized obligation program schedule, and that was $13 million. So you put those together, the 13, the 17, and the 42, that accounts for another $72 million under management separate from the city dollars. What can we expect in the coming fiscal year? The Fed continues to stand firm that interest rates will remain at extremely low rates right through 2014. Their position is supported by forecasts for economic growth in 2012 at 2.1% and for 2013 at 2.2%. And since it takes economic growth of at least 2.5% to improve the jobs picture before we can hope the Fed will consider raising rates, I would believe it's safe to say that it's not going to get better anytime soon. That leaves us with at least two more years of tough sledding. As for the city portfolio specifically, the coming year promises to be another challenging year. There is no silver bullet. Without interest rates moving higher, we have the real prospect of having another year as the one we just finished. The sobering thought is that it will be a very long time before interest rates increase enough to have much of a positive impact to our earnings picture. In the meantime, and on a positive note, we are pleased to report that the portfolio is very safe, the portfolio is very sound, and as we've described, the portfolio is very liquid. We will continue to explore all other options, as we'll be presenting changes to the investment policy in a few weeks, and we are poised to take advantage of buying opportunities when and where they present themselves. That concludes my remarks.
Well, I'm glad we're coming back to discuss the policy, and because obviously you're doing much better than LEF, much better, so I don't see why we would continue. The 24% that you have in there now, I mean, how quickly can it be liquidated, so to speak? Is it mostly one year, two years, or what?
The 24%?
With LEF.
The intent would not be to move it all into the county. I would, we would keep the two that we have with the state. We would turn around and create a third with the county. That's my intent. There's different rules, and we'll talk about that when we bring it up.
But this 24% could obviously go down in terms of percentage of our total portfolio.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's going to be moved.
Yeah. Another question?
Mr. Bruckey, as far as I can remember, these last seven years, getting these reports, we've been beating the LEF returns. So is LEF much more restrictive in their investment policy than we are? I mean, are they allowed to pick up corporate notes as we can, up to 15%?
Yeah. They, they're governed by the same government code sections that local agencies, municipalities are. However, they've got a different mission, and their mission is operating a pool. So they're taking funds from municipalities and local agencies, and they've got to keep terribly liquid. And so they focus on staying short. So they are buying corporates. They're buying a lot of overnight money. They, they're like a hybrid money-market fund in the fact that they can go beyond money-market limits of 13 months. They can go out two, three, four, and five years. But of course, since their mandate is to return money when it's requested by the participating municipalities and agencies, they stay very liquid. Because of that, our weighted average maturity that we see here of closing in on two years, theirs is around nine months. So they're very short. Yeah, they've got a difficult job. We bring up the state fund, local agency investments funds, because there's a lot of communities, primarily smaller communities, that will, that will use LEF for either most or all of their holdings. But we use it for, simply to stay liquid. It helps us.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move 8A1.
Second. Roll call.
Council members Friedman.
Yes.
Nukian.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next is item 8B, which has been pushed to next week, but I can read it into the record if anyone needs it.
Oh, that's okay. I don't think we need to do.
All right, then, in that case, HC is interim director of Glendale Water and Power and city attorney regarding presentation of Glendale Water and Power, and the city attorney on the community outreach efforts for the proposed increase in electrical rates and legal review of the Glendale Water Power transfer to the general fund and Proposition 26. C1 is a motion providing direction to staff and proceeding with a proposal for an electric rate increase.
Okay, and just to be clear, we're not going to be setting any rates tonight. We're going to hear about the outreach efforts, and we're going to hear about the legal issues.
On the transfer.
All right. Mr. Choa.
Yes, sir. We, if you recall, there's part of the budget process, and in the aftermath of the budget process, we have been talking about GWP Electric, and also reflecting on the lessons learned when the water rates were increased at the beginning of this year, and council being adamant that we needed to do not only a better job, but establish a new standard for the level of outreach that we would commence with. At the same time, we'd be taking stock of all the economic factors impacting the community and the ratepayers, and to this end, council adopted a budget for GWP, particularly GWP Electric, that was not predicated on a rate increase, that was not predicated on a massive infrastructure construction program. In fact, you approved a budget that was flatlined for revenue on the electrical side and darn near zero on the capital investment side. The reason why you did that, as you will recall, is to not presuppose the outreach efforts that would be undertaken as part of this entire process, that you would come at this with the best faith in looking both at what the needs of GWP are as we are in this transition mode, as well as what the limitations on the ratepayers are, given the economy that our city treasurer, Mr. Bruckey, had just talked about. And our commitment as staff to the council was that we would do this process right, not necessarily quickly, but we would do it right, and we would address questions, make sure that we provided the best information, the most accurate information, to all of our community stakeholders, and then return to council for the disposition of this overall look at the rates for electric. With that being the case, and with Mr. Zern being at the helm of GWP at this point in time, I will turn it over to him to review the process that was undertaken, the lessons learned, and the overall outreach effort that was executed by GWP.
Steve. Thank you, Mr. Choa. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have before you, as Mr. Choa intro'd me, is the overview of our community outreach effort. This is something that was unprecedented, and at least that's what I'm told. I haven't been at the utility that long, 90 days almost, that it is somewhat unprecedented in reaching out to the public and bringing our message forward on the condition of the utility, some of the needs of the utility, some of the accomplishments of the utility, the challenges that the utility faces, and more importantly, some of the reasons why these revenue enhancements were needed. We started our process out, and before I go any further, because there's a new face here that's helping me with the presentation. This is Eric Campbell, who is the new finance administrator assigned to Glendale Water and Power. He's been with us about the same time I've been here, 90 days, so we're learning this together and moving through this. So I didn't bring an imposter up here to help me. He's the real deal. Anyways, we started out with our electric rate advisory committee, which was comprised of a number of individuals from the community representing a wide variety of constituents. Big big business, small business, homeowners associations, the Chamber of Commerce. And we, we held these three meetings at our GWP administrative offices in an effort to run by them. All of the issues that we anticipated were going to go into our outreach effort to get their feedback and really to kind of develop a program that would best deliver our message. We held those meetings beginning in mid-June, and from there, we developed the program that we then took out to the public. We scheduled first four general community meetings. On July 11th, we held two, one during the day that was, that was focused on the business community. Then again, that night, we went to Maple Park, July 16th up to Spar Heights Community Center, July 18th to Clark Magnet. We made a presentation in their cafeteria. You can see that attendance, generally around 20 to 25 people at each meeting. We followed these general community meetings up with two special public meetings in cooperation with the Armenian National Committee. We met at the Glendale Youth Center. We had almost 40 attendees. And then in cooperation with the Chamber of Commerce, on August 2nd, we met at our police community room, four members of the, of the chamber to receive essentially the same presentation and get their feedback. The efforts also included advertisements in local newspapers, multilingual advertisements. These are the publications that we hit. They were advertised twice a week, one weekday and one weekend, for two consecutive weeks. All of it translated into the language, whether Korean, Spanish, or Armenian, depending on the particular publication. We also put out 4,000 multilingual flyers. And these, we got a great deal of help from our, our community members, from the members of the advisory committee. So we hit the faith-based and religious organizations, community and civic groups. We had these at all city department counters, city parks and libraries. And then we had a direct mailing to our 300 top users, our key business accounts, but they're essentially our 300 top users in our electrical operation. In addition, we had an op-ed piece by our city manager in the news press. Public meetings were announced on a look-ahead segment, the boom board of GTV6, fairly common for us in, in public meetings. We also recorded the first meeting we held, the July 11th meeting at the police community room. We recorded that. GTV6 did an outstanding job, and we ran that continuously on GTV6 for individuals who wouldn't have a chance to make a meeting, they could watch via the GTV6 channel. We also ran it on our website. We had it on YouTube and had over 300, as I am told, unique views, which means that is separate computers looking at, at, at the, the information. Mr. Ochoa did interviews on three television stations, orders on USA, Armenian, ABC TV Live, where he talked about the, the, the community meetings and advertised those. We also had our GWP newsletter from the source. We used Facebook and Twitter, shared with other departments as well as on our social media platforms. Now, I've, I've provided a lot of information in your packet. You have the whole community outreach public presentation. I wasn't planning on going through that slide-by-slide with you. I certainly can if you'd like. We also gave to you, we have a very detailed summary of the attendance, the questions, the categories of questions, which we're more than prepared to go over with you as well. But I thought what I'd give you is the highlights of what we used, what we showed, and the key points that we hit on, both with the, with our focus group, the advisory committee, and our community outreach effort. First thing we showed was what the financial performance of the utility looks like right now. And you can see, we have, the lower green line is our cash flow on an annual basis. And you can see in the current situation that we're in, even with a projected $10.9 million reduction, that we're still projecting a below-the-line cash flow. Our capital improvement, that middle blue line is our capital improvement program. And you can see, as Mr. Ochoa indicated, we have virtually zeroed that out. In the electric fund, the only capital we have is developer or customer-paid requests. So if a customer asks for some work to be done, we will do that, but they will pay the tab for that. We really have no other capital infrastructure or capital improvement programs budgeted. And finally, the red line at the top is our cash reserves. This is what we had projected. Now, of course, again, we're, we're in zero, but for infrastructure this year, but this is what we had projected over the next three years. This assumption was made, or this assumption is made, on a rate increase and, more importantly, a bond issue. So this is the first three years. In actuality, over the next five years, we're looking at more like a $90 million investment, we believe, needs to be made in the infrastructure. But we, for the purposes of, of discussion, we had it as, as the length or the, the term of the bond usage. So you see here, we have electric infrastructure at 28.3. Our smart grid modernization project, that's to finish up our program, 10.7 million. Some needed repairs at, at our power plant, which is, is aging, 12.4 million, and then some general facilities repairs we needed at, at just under 5 million. This is a list of the more detailed projects that go into that previous summary. Grandview Substation, oh, I'm sorry, Eric. Grandview Substation is at the top there, along with our, our smart grid, at least the finalization of our first $70 million of that program. And the Grandview Substation, as I mentioned, is our big, big project over the next several years. And that is a, an upgrade. And Mr. Buegg will come up in a minute and go into some more detail about our capital programs. But that's an upgrade to the station, and really, it's, it's a lot of modernization as well, with the conversion to 12 KV, our ability to be more efficient in our usage, but also able to, to better serve our customers.
As you went through this material during the budget, these are items that we showed as either critical, non-deferrable, critical-deferrable, and giving you some order of magnitude as to where they fall in the priority. So again, just, you know, for the, the public's edification, the council's seen this information, albeit in a different format.
These are some of the current challenges that we face. The economy, obviously, Mr. Baruchy just got finished on the tails of his presentation. We're dealing with a, with a recessionary period. The weather. We've experienced some of the mildest weather we've had over the last three years, and that has a direct impact on us as, as the, the usage has gone down. We haven't had hot periods like we're currently experiencing, sustained hot periods where you see usage go up. So our summer, our summer usage was down, and therefore, our revenue was also down. Loss of large customers. Again, this ties back to the economy. We have vacancies in, in where the Mervins was, in Borders, in Circuit City, just as a, a few examples, but we are seeing a, a reduction in some of our bigger customers. Renewable energy state mandate, that's essentially, in addition to our renewable portfolio that we have to, to achieve, there's also a, a mandate that we reduce our energy consumption by 1% per year. So conservation is also impacting our, our income and our revenue and our, well, our sales, which impacts our, our revenue. Those four right there have resulted in about a 15% decrease in revenue since '09, '10. So in just three short years, we've had a 15% drop in overall revenue that we attribute greatly to those, those first four bullets there. The third, or the fifth, fifth bullet is alignment of revenues and expenditures, fancy way of saying, we need to balance our budget. A combination of revenue enhancements, we believe, just as important, cost reductions and cost containment, restructuring of our operation, all of those things combined to get us better aligned. This is our current budget, broken out. Again, Mr. Ochoa referred to this as our, we've called it zero-based amongst the staff, but this is how that's cut up. Large portion of that is the fuel and purchased electricity. I will point out that as we went through our community meetings, that particular piece of the pie was one that surprised a lot of people. They weren't aware of the amount of money we spend buying electricity and the fuel to produce electricity. So this was very helpful in doing that. We have, obviously, the, the transfer, which, which has gotten a lot of discussion. Our core O&amp;M budget at 44.3. And then we have in our accounting depreciation number, interest on bonds, and then essentially the capital improvements that are, as I mentioned, developer or customer requested and paid for. Current status. We've reduced the budget in '12, '13 by 20% or roughly $53 million. A great deal of that is the capital improvement program. We've also seen significant decreases in our workforce, 20% through the elimination of vacant positions, retirements, and layoffs. Again, the capital improvement budget has essentially been zeroed out. And we're going through a comprehensive evaluation of the entire utility, and the new leadership that's been installed is preparing the utility for the future. Those, those last two bullets are going to go hand-in-hand. It's the, it's the, it's the new management looking at, you know, taking a comprehensive evaluation of the whole utility and seeing where we can, again, going back to that, aligning our, our, our costs and, and our revenues and getting our, our balanced budget and getting the utility restructured for the future, a different utility for the future. I'm going to ask Ramon to come up and talk a little bit about our CIP program. What we, what we made a great emphasis in our, in our outreach was how important it was to keep our infrastructure up and what that infrastructure means to, to the average ratepayer, reliability. That, that's really what it's about. So I'm going to have Ramon come up and talk to you a little bit about this.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero. I'm city council. Ramona Buegg is assistant general manager. If you recall, back in 2005, when we came in front of you to ask for a rate increase and as well as to bond finance some of the projects that we needed to do, at that time, we were having several issues, several power outages, and we said that in order to fix the infrastructure, we needed, excuse me, we needed the rate increase in the bond, and we needed to invest into the infrastructure to make some changes. So those of you that were here, we made this presentation, this was the exact slide that we showed, that what we needed to do and what we needed to, to spend in order to make the improvements. So, and there are five areas that we focus on in our capital improvement programs. The five areas are transmission, the substation, distribution, system protection, and, and monitoring. No. So in those categories, we tried to focus in the big items, the transmission system, where we've had several problems and, and outages, and also where we found some deficiencies. We fixed our transmission system or the transmission lines that connect the substations to each other. We upgraded it, and we added some transmission lines in order to improve the efficiency of the system. At the same time, in the substations, we have upgraded two of our major substations, including the Calhoun Substation. We changed out the transformers that were aging and that were giving us problems. And these two projects alone, these two programs alone are in the tune of about $50 million. Then the other areas where we made some-
Excuse me, Ramon. That was done in the past, how many years? Three?
Since 2005.
Since 2005.
That's correct. And then in the distribution system, we went and start upgrading our system or converting them from 4 KV to 12 KV. And this really is the start of what we call the project and the substations, plus the distribution system, is the start of actually modernizing our system. We started putting in new equipment, new devices that, that allow us to give us a lot more information about the health of the electric system. In addition to that, the conversion program that we have, when we convert from 4 KV to 12 KV, we actually reduce the energy losses as we bring the power into the system. Since we started the conversion, we've had about savings of about $1.1 million in the energy that we had to purchase that just go out into what we call system losses. And additionally, the system protection investment that we have is, it allows us to minimize the total outages or the duration of the outages, give us information what may be going into the system, predictably, we were able to predict what may happen next, and it allows us to do a lot of mitigation right away to minimize the impact of an outage. And last but not least, there is what we call the SCADA system, which stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition, that gives us real-time monitoring. So we do know when an outage occurs before we start getting calls. And that gives us an instant messaging at our dispatch center. So as a result of these investments, again, if you're back in 2005, if you recall, we were having a lot of outages. And what, what this presents is the improvements that we've made in the reliability of our system through the investment that we've made into our infrastructure. Back in 2005, what these numbers mean is, if you live in Glendale or have a business in Glendale, based on the industry index, you can expect that you will have at least three outages per year. Okay? And if you do have an outage, you can expect that your power is likely to be out for about three hours per incident. What we've done through the investments in our infrastructures, we now say that if you live in Glendale, you might be able to expect one outage per year. And if you do, the total duration of outage is probably about 40 minutes. Those are pretty significant improvements. And to show that relative to what's happening with our neighboring utilities, is, this is a comparison of our response. This is the duration of outages compared to the other cities. As you can see, GWP, our numbers are declining, and we're very comparable to Burbank, and by compared to the larger utilities like Edison and, and LA, we're doing a lot better. Our outage really is averaging about 40 minutes, which is our goal. And ultimately, once we modernize the system, we put the automation long-term. We, we expect the outage duration to be about 20 minutes, but that's a very long-term and requires a lot of investment. Also want to point out that Pasadena, although it's showing it's a very high number, that's the effect of the wind storm that we had in November, December. So that's really more of an exception for them. So I didn't want this to present that they're doing much more struggling, but this is more of an exception. But this is the numbers that it showed.
I think I take away for, for you, council, and certainly for all of our customers, is that when you look at the amount of investment that has gone on over these last five to seven years, it is reflective of what the plan called out for. What, what the city council has over the years indicated that you would invest in the system to ensure reliability and good consistent service. And GWP has executed those plans between the electrical side of the house and the water side of the house. What the difference is, is that in, in those cases where rates were increased, we didn't actually go and sell bonds and instead paid, paid as you went and, and spent cash on hand to do those investments. And that is, that is reflected in, in our balance sheet today. So certainly, there is a need for cost containment within GWP. But when you look at what the reserves were and what the reserves are, it's a function of the capitalization of those reserves. You had cash, you converted it into infrastructure, as you said that you were going to do over the last several years.
And, I'm sorry.
What is the vertical?
Minutes, Mr. Weaver.
Minutes?
Minutes, yes. I'm leaving this up here because Ramon is, is much, he's been, you know, a little, yeah, he's been very humble.
Pasadena, during the windstorm, had an average of 350 minutes outages on the average.
That was, it primarily concentrated on the windstorm, right.
But on the average.
Right.
For the whole city.
Right. But you'll notice, we had the same windstorm here in Glendale, and we were hit hard. And you'll notice our-
Can you, okay, I was going to ask them to put the slide back on. They did.
Our, our, our bar is very, very low, in fact, the lowest of all of them. So while I don't, certainly don't want to cast any disparaging remarks at Pasadena, I think more I wanted to, to extol the virtues of our own staff in that, you know, it might have been a little more severe over in Pasadena, but it was pretty severe here. I think you all would agree to that. And we, our outage was, was shorter, we were up, we were running, and in fact, we made the call over to Pasadena and offered our services to help them.
Well, and specifically, if you look, never mind Pasadena, if you look at Southern Cal-Eddison and you look at LED WP, I mean, it's striking in terms of how much more reliable our system is. It's almost, what, twice as reliable, three times as reliable? Even close.
Was part of that because we have an aggressive tree trimming contracts out there and with the 4K lines, we made sure we trimmed around those?
I, I think, Mr. Weaver, absolutely, it's, it's our aggressive tree trimming program, which is something that was reduced in the budget, but because I feel so strongly about it, I will be back to talk to you about that because I've made some, some, I've shuffled a few things to get that back. Because, you know, those winds come to Glendale almost every year. You know, different severity, but in that December-January period, we can expect some wind. We don't want to find ourselves in that situation. So I think the tree trimming is very, very important and a key indicator in why we were, we were able to perform that well. And again, reliability, and Mr. Mr. Ochoa summed it up very well. We converted- We converted cash into capital assets and that translated into this top level of reliability for our customers. Thanks, Eric. So we'll get to, as part of our presentations, in order to gauge the public's input and concern over, in comments and recommendations over any type of rate increase, there was essentially two scenarios that we proposed, and these are just scenarios. As we told the public, these are what we've come up with, they haven't been shown to the commissioner or the council, but just to give you an idea, when I came on, the proposal was what we call the original. Six and a half the first year, six followed by a four, and then two years of zero out to 2017 for an overall 17.4%. I put my head together with the staff and just said, considering the economic situation and where we're at, that we needed to look at a much more palatable type of rate, something that would help us, but also something that would lessen the impact to the rate payer. So we stretched it out for an extra year, four years, going 3344 with a total of 14.7. What did this do for us? This didn't get us to where we wanted to be as quickly, it didn't get cash reserves quite to where we wanted them to be, but we all felt comfortable that this type of a rate scenario would get us to, on the right path. We then translated that again, this is all for the public consumption and their feedback. We translated that into some of our average customers and how that would look on their rates. So we had the low income, which by average 250 kilowatt-hours per month, equated into an 89 cent increase, $91.11, $1.14, that's compounded each year. Multi-family, you'll see that in the yellow gold box, and our single-family, last box there with the, beginning with a 218.
Those kilowatt-hours are averages?
Averages. For our users, for our users. You'll see, we have another comparison that we have, that LED WP did using a 500 kilowatt-hour. It's different averages for different utilities, but this is our actual average, and so that we want to be as accurate as we could for this scenario discussion point. Then on the low income, in addition, we have a program for individuals to enroll in, whether they be senior or low income, both. And so that's a $10 a month discount. So you can see with the proposal or the scenario that we showed, you have current versus where you would be with the various scenario increases that we presented.
So in the first year, the $30.83 compares with the slide before?
Right.
If you go back?
So if we went back to slide, if you look up there-
39.94 now.
Right. It goes to 40.83 under the scenario, and then with the $10 discount, you go down to 30.83.
That's lower than the current.
Yes. No, the current, I'm sorry, Mr. Weaver, the current would be 29.94 with the low income discount. So if you're looking at the gold box-
Thirty, proposed in 2012, 2013, it will be $30.83.
Correct.
But currently, they're paying?
29.94.
29, so they get $1 increase.
Eighty-nine cents.
Full dollar. Okay.
And I show that slide because there was, at least one of our community outreach meetings, a lot of interest in the low-income program. And it was also something that I had indicated that as a staff, we were able to expand on that if and when the time presented itself, to look at potential options of increasing that through some of our other programs, if in fact that was the desire of the council. This is the LED WP comparison that was done in May. This is on a 500 kilowatt-per-hour basis, but it shows, that's us in the middle with essentially the other large municipal utilities, and we also have Edison in there. The little red portion is actually the increase that would come about under the scenario of the 3344.
Does this reflect LA's proposed increases?
We don't believe that this includes any increases. What we have now from the various agencies is Burbank is 1.75% proposal, Pasadena 2.25%. Edison has just released their public notice 4.42%. And LED WP, from a staff level, has presented a two-year 10 and 10, so 20 in two years. It appears that what they will likely get through their commission is more a 5 and 5.
So right now, this is showing us at 500 kilowatts as being the second lowest-
That's correct.
Rates.
We will be the lowest.
The whole region.
That's what LA is.
And when they all, yeah, when they all do their increases, we're definitely the lowest.
Correct.
Well, that's interesting because we've had a lot of members of the public come up and accuse us of being the most expensive. How can you explain that?
Well, Ms. Friedman, alls I can say is, it depends on what you look at. You're going to see a slide later where we show you small business and we show you large commercial user, and it changes a little bit there. We're still pretty low, but some folks will get below us on those. So, you know, Ms. Friedman, I faced that same question in some of the community meetings, especially with Edison. There was a lot of discussion about Edison for some reasons, to which we said, they are by far the highest. And as an Edison customer, I can tell you clearly they're going to raise their rates. And it's just now a matter of how much. Edison didn't propose a multi-year rate, they proposed a single-year rate, but my sense is, and what I've heard, is they'll be back next year and most likely the following year as well.
So for residential, we're now the second lowest out of 1, 2, 5, 6, 7 utilities in the area, well, all of them, all utilities in the area. And we will be the lowest as of next year.
Here's that, the other comparison I was going to show you. 2,000 kilowatt per hour, that's small business, that's as a, it would be, let's say, a business in a strip mall or a description. Large commercial user, 100,000 kilowatt-hours or more, that's the top of the usage chain. That's a hospital, for instance, facility that's 24/7, 365, and using quite a bit of electricity. You can see that, while you'll see a drop, and this is where Edison comes down, I think, and some people will often use Edison, they do have more favorable large commercial rates. But again, we hang pretty tough in here as far as being competitive on each category.
They're going to adjust all these rates, too.
Correct, correct. Our understanding is these are across-the-board rate proposals by the other agencies.
And even now, it's very close.
Yes, very true, Ms. Friedman. As I said, we are hanging with everybody else in regards to being very competitive in our rates all the way across the board.
And if we're able to modernize our lines and other components, we'll be even more efficient, I mean, in comparison, we will be even better off.
Yeah. Mr. Weaver, there is a certain benefit, financial benefit, that comes from modernizing our infrastructure. Mainly, it's the reduction of loss. The older system experiences loss over the line. So we buy the power and we lose it before we can get it to, before we can sell it. And that's just the antiquated system, the 4KV system. The upgrade to the 12KV system allows us to reduce that significantly. Now, the cost, you know, the cost benefit or the payback takes some time, but you do save money over that just through the reduction in loss.
Well, also, isn't it true that the 12KV will have less outages in a windstorm, whatever?
It's more reliable, yes.
More reliable, too.
Yes. So that's really an important part of our overall infrastructure program that we want to continue. We're about, Ramon, how far are we along in our conversion program?
We're about 40% completed in our conversion program and the current plan or in our long-term plan. We're planning to be completed by 2027, provided that we can have some funds for our capital programs.
And as I have told folks in our outreach meetings, and I'm far from an expert, I'll need at least a couple more months on the job, but I'm getting there. But there's a lot of discussion about, and certainly you have heard it more than anyone else, about smart meters and smart grid in this and that. And one of the things I said is, there seems to be a great deal of focus on the meter itself. The meter itself is one aspect of the overall smart grid program. In my opinion, being an infrastructure person, it's that 4KV to 12KV conversion program, that's the smart grid upgrade, as it's sometimes called, or what we'd like to say is a modernization program, that's really the heart and soul of the smart grid program. That's where we're going to get the biggest bang for the buck. The meters are going to help us reduce some overall costs. Really, it'll be more of a benefit for the customer, but from a true operational standpoint, an infrastructure standpoint, that smart grid, 4KV to 12KV is what's important.
It's ironic that, I think it was in last week's Time Magazine, that you saw this big write-up on the investment in modernization of the grid. If you remember the crisis days of where we were in the mid-2000s and towards the late 2000s of these mass blackouts, taking out whole sections of the entire country, the investment that's been put in place, similar to what Glendale is doing, leading the charge on, is what's having a very serious positive impact both on residential and commercial service.
And just to sum up, and again, in your packet, we have a detailed summary. Mr. Powers from my office did an outstanding job of not only coordinating the outreach, but also putting together the summary of what, recording of what transpired at the meetings. But a great majority of the questions were about the transfer. Some of them critical, others having heard about it quite a bit, asking what it was, where it went. In my opinion, for folks that were new to the meetings, new to the question, a lot of it was interest in, what exactly is this transfer and where does it go? And when we explained what it is and where it does go, there was a sense of recognition. I think we had a lot less comments regarding the specific rate scenarios. We had a lot of financial questions, just in general, about different things, such as, and Mr. Ochoa answered that, you know, how did, what did you do with the reserves when you drew down on those reserves? Where did they go? Well, they went into the infrastructure. And what did that do? That got us to the reliability issue. So we were able to tie those back. But I think there was, depending on the meeting, obviously, we had a chamber meeting, the businesses were very concerned, considering the economy and any kind of a rate increase. When we went to the Glendale Youth Center, we had a higher preponderance of low-income folks, folks that are struggling a little bit, concerned about, more about the rates than some of the other meetings. But overall, you know, it was about 20 to 25 people. Questions, we had several people that attended all the meetings that asked several questions. So as I say, some folks who, just out of interest, we had a couple of businesses and a couple of residents asking questions in general about things that were, I think, other than the rate scenarios. But again, I think, could we have done better? Absolutely. We learned a lot of things. Will this be the standard for us going forward in the future? Absolutely. As I said, we've set the bar. It's not, that doesn't mean that's where it's going to stay, but we've got a new minimum. We're going to go from there. And I think anytime that we go out, whether, any part of our utility, we're going to engage in this kind of outreach. Great suggestion we had as well, just in general, updates on the utility and some of the things that are happening, and where we're going with infrastructure, and how we're doing these conversions, and maybe updates on the grid, the smart grid and the modernization update. That's something else we can do as well. As much as we can get out and talk about the utility and the great things that it's doing, where we are, where we want to be, and where we're going, and how that affects our residents, I think is excellent. So again, we blaze some new ground, we've got a lot of work to do, and we will continue to move in that direction. So with that, before I can answer any questions, or I'll turn it over to my colleague to do the second part of the presentation.
Are there any questions?
I have some questions. Mr. Zern, on that rate comparison, do you have information on the percentage of renewable resources that our surveyed cities have?
We can get that, Mr. Najarian.
Is it safe to say that we're near the top of the list for our percentage of renewable energy?
Mr. Lenz would know that. We're about 20%, 33% is what the 2020 mandate requires. I don't know where we stand in relation. You want to?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we were ahead by-
Name for the record.
Sorry, Steve Lenz, Chief Assistant General Manager for Glendale Water and Power. We were quite ahead of the pack, but the pack is catching up because we're up against a compliance deadline, which is 11, 12, and 13. We're all supposed to have an average of about 20%. So they're all getting close to that line. We're all starting to equalize.
And the renewable energy is generally a little more expensive than our traditional coal-fired plants that we used to purchase from heavily in Utah?
The rules on my uses is about twice as expensive. It's about $100 a megawatt for renewables, and it's about $50 a megawatt for our coal resources.
So part of the reason for the increase in expenses is the march towards the renewable energy mileposts that have been set by the state?
That's correct, and we have another 13% to go in the next eight years. And as we scale that in, those costs are going to go up as well.
And that's regardless of how we run our organization, how efficient we are, what upgrades we do, what transfer anything is made. This is just the general trend. As we go towards the renewable, that's the price you pay for a cleaner environment and reducing the greenhouse gases. Is that correct?
Correct.
Well, on the issue of outreach, I think the staff, and you, Mr. Zern, I think you did an excellent job. Everywhere, the locations, the media, I think you did an excellent job of informing the public. And how many people showed up, I think that-
We had, total of the six meetings, 149.
Right. Well, and I think that's interesting, that same people showed up to a number of different meetings, as I read the blurbs from each meeting. But the bottom line was, you made it available to the entire city of Glendale, business as well as community groups, and like I say, a geographic balance between south and north. So I think you did a great, great job.
Mr. Ochoa?
Only, just as we transition, unless there's other questions, segue to Mr. Garcia's portion of the presentation. Again, this is not a rate hearing, and in fact, I want to make it very clear that the marching orders from council were to, if a rate was what was desired, then to go and establish this new baseline of interaction with the community and bring that feedback back to council. And as what you've heard Mr. Zern talk about, and what you no doubt have heard from residents, businesses, and other stakeholders, one, we want you to know that we did all of the outreach above and beyond what's gone on before, and as Mr. Zern indicated, kind of pioneered a new trail there for, and set a new benchmark for our outreach efforts. But that, no matter how much information we can put in front of the community, the economy is what the economy is. And so the purpose of this discussion tonight, this first part of the discussion, is to give the council the confidence and the assurance that you can then give to the community that we said, we did what we said we were going to do. Put that information out to anybody and everybody who wanted it, and make it available in very easy-to-understand terms, and then return back to you, because as you know, again, you've already approved a budget for this current year, and anything above that budget, that revenue estimate was a function of all kinds of different factors that only you, as the policymakers of this community, are in a position to determine. And the economy no doubt is one of them. So with that, if Mr. Garcia is ready, make this transition.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Put that up. Okay, good evening, members of, Mayor, members of council. As you know, we've been reviewing two particular issues with respect to electric rates. One having to do with the electric transfer and whether the method in which we effectuate that transfer is consistent with the charter. And in addition, and that's a distinct issue from whether or not, in the event, or at the time that the council decides to adopt an electric rate increase in the future, whether that will be consistent with the requirements of Proposition 26 in light of that transfer. And I would note that Christine Godinez of my office prepared a lengthy memorandum which was attached to the report, and also presented this item to the GWP Commission, and she's been breathing this stuff for the last couple of months. Before I get into, I want to, we want to address our conclusions first because there's a number of slides on these two issues. With respect to the transfer itself, our view is, with one exception, that the city's accounting practices are compliant with the city charter, taking into account all the requirements of the charter, both the specific mandates of the fund balances required by certain sections of the transfer, as well as other provisions in the charter that we'll get into. With the one exception, and we'll address that, is that currently, the transfer is budgeted at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then that transfer is actually posted into the general fund on a monthly basis, 1/12 of it is posted. into the general fund on a monthly basis, one-twelfth of it is posted. And because of the language in the charter says that it shall occur at the end of the fiscal year, our recommendation has been to continue to budget for the transfer at the beginning of the fiscal year, but do not actually effectuate that transfer until the end of the fiscal year. And so, as you recall, we were here before you in June, where the council actually approved the transfer, and approved the reduction in the transfer, so it was less than 25%. And so, and at that time, the actual dollar amounts had been transferred over, although the council certainly had the authority at that time to lower the transfer amount even further. The second, on the second issue related to Proposition 26, our view is that the existing rate structures are compliant with Prop. 26, and that's because Proposition 26 has a grandfather clause. In other words, it does not apply to existing rates, which is a distinction between Proposition 218. Proposition 218 clearly required, at some point, for cities to get their water rates and other rates that were subject to Proposition 218 into compliance. In addition, our view is that proposed rate increases, if there are any, would not require voter approval under Proposition 26. So I will address each issue separately. With respect to the electric fund transfer, the issue is, is the city properly transferring funds from the Electric Works Revenue Fund to the general fund, and are the city's accounting practices compliant with the city charter? And before I get into a little bit detail of our viewpoint, just wanted to summarize the specific electric funds that are specified in the charter. There is the Electric Works Revenue Fund, the Depreciation Fund, Sinking Fund, and Surplus Fund. The Electric Works Revenue Fund is essentially the checking account for the electric operation. It receives all the receipts from electrical energy that are sold to the public, or other revenues that are received, such as wholesale revenues, and that, those sorts of activities. Those electric revenue funds are used to pay for budgeted disbursements on behalf of electric works, so both operations and capital. Except for depreciation, I'll get into that a little bit more. The balance, if any, at the end of the fiscal year, then goes into the surplus fund. The depreciation fund, and I'm raising this because one of the issues that has been raised by Mr. Zavos and others, is that the city's not properly, or putting enough into the depreciation fund, and thereby, the allegation being that we're violating the charter. The depreciation, again, that is funded from electric revenues, and it, what it states is that it shall be sufficient to meet the normal depreciation of electric works. And depreciation is essentially the allocation of historical cost of a capital asset throughout its useful life. What it is not, is it is not a capital replacement fund, and we'll get into that, I'll get into that a little bit more, to explain what the difference is, why our current practice is consistent with the charter. What the depreciation fund shall be used for is only for repair, replacement, betterment, or extension of capital and equipment of the electric operation. And it's key to note that, even with the depreciation fund, those funds being required to be used for that purpose, nothing in that provision of the charter limits the city from issuing bonds for the purposes of capital, or any other purpose. The next fund is the Sinking Fund. It's laid out in Article 11, Section 21, also funded from electric revenue funds, and its essential purpose at the time that it was established was to pay principal and interest on bonds. And the reason that it was established that way was, and I believe this provision dates back to the 40s, as well as most of these provisions, is so that there was a keen awareness by the city that it had to put this money aside, and to pay bond debt. And as a result, it's somewhat antiquated, because now, with modern accounting practices, with modern accounting software, this actually is no longer necessary. And I would also point out that the charter also provides very specifically, or very expressly, that debt service can also be paid out of the electric revenue fund. And again, here is the reason, this is the entire section, or most of the section, related to the Sinking Fund, and we don't currently maintain this fund, for the reasons I stated. And in addition, this particular provision of the charter clearly provides that we can pay those costs directly from the Electric Works Revenue Fund, which is our practice. The next fund is the Surplus Fund, and I think this is, one of the issues is whether or not we are properly putting funds into and taking funds out of the surplus fund correctly. So, the funds that go into the surplus fund are those amounts in excess of the requirements of the several funds, as herein said forth before. So, it's anything out of the electric revenue fund that we've, after we've paid all of our obligations during the fiscal year. And the next section, Article 11, Section 20, states that the credit balance, if any, or any part thereof, in each of said funds, at the end of the fiscal year, the amount of which is in excess of the amounts of all outstanding demands and liabilities, shall be transferred to the surplus fund. And then, what goes out of the surplus fund is, it can be used by the council for any purpose related to electric works, as long as a special appropriation is made by the As we get into this discussion a little bit about the transfer and our obligations under these charter provisions, I also wanted to note that there's another provision of the charter, which I think has some interplay here, and that's the audit requirement. Article 6, Section 16, provides that the council must employ a certified public accountant at least once a year to investigate the transaction accounts of the city. And what, and obviously, these audits are done in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And the reason I bring this up is that you have this obligation to undertake this audit. And it, an audit that's not done in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles is really not, is not worth the paper it's printed on. And so, not only do you have an obligation, as a city, as the city council, to make sure that we are funding all of our funds in accordance with the charter requirements, but we also have to do so in a way that is consistent with these GAAP principles. Now, on the transfer itself, the transfer provides that, the transfer provision of the charter provides that, at the end of each fiscal year, an amount equal to 25% of the operating revenues of the, of GWP, excluding receipts from water and power supplied to other cities' utilities, shall be transferred from the surplus fund to the general reserve fund, and we can discuss that if we want. And then, as we, as you all know, because we do this every year, the council, at the end of the fiscal year, can reduce that amount, or wholly waive it, if, in the council's opinion, that the reduction or waiver is necessary to ensure the sound financial position of the utility. Let me go through now the issues, at least we've sort of condensed them and put them into four different categories, and addressed those. And these are the issues that have been raised, obviously, to you, at the council meetings, by Mr. Zavos and by others, as well as, these issues have also been raised at the community meetings, as Mr. Zern mentioned. The first issue is, obviously, the contention that the depreciation fund is not being sufficiently funded. Second one is that the transfer rate should apply to the inflow into the surplus fund. In other words, the net, it should apply to net operating income, as opposed to operating revenue. The third allegation, or contention, is that the transfer, as we currently do, cannot be budgeted, because the charter only allows the transfer of surplus monies into the surplus fund. And then, the fourth issue is that the transfer should take place at the end of the year, not at the beginning of the fiscal year, or throughout the fiscal year. So with respect to the depreciation fund, I've touched on it a little bit already, but again, it's what's needed to meet normal depreciation of electric work, of the electric As used in traditional accounting principles, depreciation is the allocation of the historical cost of the asset. It's not what is needed for future capital improvements. And I think, I want to stress this again, because I think it's been stated here several times, that we really should, the utility shouldn't have the need, or should have perhaps a lesser need, to increase rates or address revenue concerns for capital needs, because we should already be taking care of that capital need through the depreciation. That's not what the depreciation fund is for. It's traditionally, in that case, you're talking about either a capital replacement fund, or in our case, just a capital project account. With respect to the second issue that's been raised, our view, again, is that our methodology does comply with the charter. The method that's suggested, has been suggested by Mr. Zavos and others, that it's the percentage of the surplus, we don't feel that that's the most consistent way to comply with the charter. And the reason for that is twofold, and we've highlighted the two provisions, we think, here that make a difference here. One is that it says 25% of operating revenue. Operating revenue is, again, it's all the revenue that the utility receives. It's not net operating income, which is a different term, that, for the purposes of accounting for this particular transfer. The second portion of this provision that I've highlighted, what it does say is, what you do exclude from the amount that you base your calculation of the transfer on, is those revenues received from wholesale revenues. And the reason I point that out, the reason we've addressed this issue, is because it's our view that, because the charter specifically excludes what you exclude from the calculation of the transfer amount, that you shouldn't then exclude any other source of revenue from that transfer. And that's a provision, it's a Latin phrase, espresso unius. And so, essentially, if the legislature or the charter provision excludes one particular provision, you can't read other exclusions into a particular provision of statute. This is, again, I don't probably need to go too much into this, but again, these are the different sources of funds that go into the surplus fund. And again, what we, what our practice is, is to transfer, budget for the transfer at the beginning of the fiscal year, and we will, as I will get into later, we will effectuate the transfer at the end of the fiscal year. And from an accounting perspective, you cannot, and Mr. Elliott, maybe I'll explain this better if we have questions, you cannot transfer, sorry, I lost my train of thought here. What you can't do is, you can't transfer revenue from a reserve account to another reserve account. And so, it's not, it's not in accordance with general accounting, accepted accounting principles, and that's the reason we do it. With respect to this allegation, obviously, again, our view is very clearly, the language says plainly, 25% of operating revenue, and operating revenue is gross. It's not what goes into the surplus fund. With respect to the third issue, regarding the budgeting of the transfer, we do not budget for a surplus, but we do budget the transfer. And the reason that that's done is twofold. One is that you are required by the charter to provide an estimate of all the revenues that are going to be going into the general fund, and all the expenses that are going to be paid out of the general fund. And so, it's, not only is it required by charter, but it is a good practice, it is a good budget planning practice, to be prepared for what that transfer amount is going to be. Again, the transfer, it's a mandatory obligation, so, unless it's waived at the end of the fiscal year. So you have to account for what that's going to be, or else you're chart, you, from the general fund side of the ledger, you're not going to be meeting that particular requirement. And again, Article 6, Section 6, requires the city manager to submit a proposed budget, to include estimate of all the revenues and expenditures of the departments. There is a provision that excludes the revenues of GWP, but our view is, that's the entire revenue stream. What that means is, you do not, you don't take all GWP revenues and all the general fund revenues and put them together for purposes of planning out your general fund budget. With respect to the timing of the transfer, and again, the issue is that that should take place at the end of the year. And our view is that the best practice would be to change that practice, to not post it on a monthly basis, but to actually effectuate that at the end of the year. We certainly, there certainly could be, I think, a good argument, that our current, the practice that we've been following still could comply with the law, because the council certainly has the discretion, when we came to you on June 26 of the year, to reverse it. But because the language says it occurs at the end of the fiscal year, we don't, we're not, we believe that the best practice is to make it happen at the end of the fiscal year. Before I move to the Prop. 26 issues, are there any issues on the transfer mechanism itself?
Do you think this is some language we ought to clean up in the charter? We went through an extensive review, we had a whole committee that looked at the charter. Former mayor's stuff were on there, but they never got down in a nitty-gritty of something like this. Consider this, and anything else, to put on as a charter amendment next election?
Well, I know Mr. Elliott certainly has a view that we should, because there's a number of provisions, not only these provisions, but a few others, that are outdated, antiquated, and not consistent with GAAP principles. And we're having this discussion, frankly, because of that outdated charter language.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, absolutely, this is a part of the charter that should be cleaned up.
Name for the record.
Oh, Bob Elliott, Finance Director. Apologize. We've had a number of meetings on this very topic. The pieces of what Mr. Garcia just went through really don't reflect how accounting for enterprise funds occur today. There's pieces, the surplus fund really is the balance sheet, the revenue fund is really the P and L, the profit and loss statement. We combine all those into what we call the electric operation. We maintain all these, excuse me, all these separate funds, but absolutely, it needs to be cleaned up.
Beyond that, beyond this department, are there other accounting language in the rest of the charter that you think needs a similar kind of revision?
Indeed.
Want to do at the same time?
Yes, absolutely.
And I think a lot of it is actually just simplifying it, just making, for example, in the case of the surplus fund, just rather than having the electric revenues fund, and then the surplus fund, you just have a fund, which is how some other jurisdictions have it. So it's clear that that's, you can account for that, and then, and then the city, the Finance Director has the discretion, or it's laid out in the budget, that there are sub-funds of those particular, of those particular funds.
Well, then I think, yeah, let's put it on the agenda, so we can discuss it, and let's move forward to do what's needed.
One more point I should raise, I mean, there's a couple of areas where, if we were to handle these accounts in the way that's been suggested by Mr. Zavos, we're going to get to the same point, in terms of what's left over in the surplus fund, after we've done all the accounting. It's just, so, not only are we complying, but we are going to, at the end of the day, get to the same spot, in terms of dollar numbers, to where we are as we do it now. And I wanted to stress that.
And the audits that we have done for us verify that.
Right. That's correct.
And to the extent that you, that there is an argument that says, well, what the charter says that, what the charter reads, as the charter reads today, and thus you can follow it to the letter, that doesn't come without some consequence, because, again, it isn't consistent with generally accepted auditing, accounting principles for today. So, it's almost a pick-your-poison. And it comes back to what the council has just indicated, that, you know, should we go and clean up the charter? Yes, we believe that's the case. Is it easier said than done? Most certainly it is. And there's likely a reason why this and other items within the charter have not been, have not been dealt with. But at this point, you're seeing it come to a head, where we've spent many, many hours, and thousands and thousands of dollars, looking at this particular issue, and coming to these conclusions, which is to say, we understand what the objections have been, we just disagree with them.
And just to be clear, the suggestion to change the charter is not because there's something illegal or wrong with it now, it's just that it's written in a way that doesn't make sense for today's accounting principles.
That's absolutely--
Just sort of across the board.
Absolutely.
Because things have changed in the last 50 years, and--
Correct. And in fact, you know, something was said about what Mr. Elliott had said at a previous meeting, that it was taken out of context, that he, we're, we don't comply with the charter because it's inconsistent. No, we do. In fact, we maintain a lot of these accounts, simply because the charter requires it, but otherwise, we wouldn't be. And then, that's the key thing. We do, we maintain all the accounts, with the exception of the Sinking Fund, which would truly be form over substance if we kept that. And we maintain every single account that's required by the charter, it's in the budget, and it's also in the CAFR. I'll move on to Proposition 26, and this is, you know, this is relatively new law, was adopted by the voters in November of 2010, and the main issue, again, is, the issue that has been raised, is whether the Proposition 26 will require a vote of the people to increase the rates, given the fact that we have the electric transfer. Okay, those are the-- Those are the issues. And just so you know, a Proposition 26 vote does require a two-thirds vote of the electorate. And in our view is that that particular voting requirement does not apply to a rate increase, even with the transfer. Okay, so here's our conclusions again. The current rates are not in violation of Proposition 26, because it does not—it is —the statute or the initiative is not retroactive, unlike Proposition 218. And our view is also that the electric rate increases, an electric rate increase will not trigger the voting requirements of Proposition 26. Okay, so Proposition 26 was an amendment to the California Constitution in November of 2010, and amended Articles 13(c) and 13(d) of the Constitution regarding taxes, expanding the definition of tax. And essentially, if it's a tax or if it's a tax increase, it cannot be extended, imposed, or increased without a vote of the public. Couple of things. Proposition 26 is prospective, again, going forward after November of 2010. Any existing rates or rate structures existing as of November 3, 2010 are grandfathered?
Can I ask you a quick question about that, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor? The question is, out of however many utilities, public utilities in California, how many of them have these transfers approximately? What percentage do you believe?
I don't know if I have a number, but there's quite a few. I mean, just in our interactions with different city attorneys, and they have—it's structured differently in different communities. Some cities have a straight transfer like us, others call it a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot, it's structured like that. Others do it—they call it a—they'll call it a payment in lieu of franchise fee, those sorts of things.
So they're still doing it? They're not stopping?
I don't know if any utility that's stopped. And Redding, which we'll get into a little bit, has so far been successful in its lawsuit.
But we're not out there on our own with something like this?
No, certainly not. And even as it relates to the water transfer, which was impacted by Proposition 218, we were not the only one doing it. A lot of agencies did it, and to my knowledge, we're one of the few that discontinued it after light of some of the issues that were raised in the big horn decision.
Which is to say that there are a number of agencies that have continued with that water transfer.
Yeah. Okay, so the triggering events for Proposition 26 are any levy that extends, imposes, or increases electric rates after November 3, 2010. And the Proposition 218 Omnibus Implementation Act, which also applies to Prop 26, defines what those terms mean. So if we extend the sunset clause, or if we actually increase either the applicable rate or the formula that's used to calculate the rate, then those things are deemed to be increases in the electric rate? And just to give you an example of that, if you had a pre-existing formula prior to 2010, existed prior to 2010, you could increase a rate, whether it was electric rate or other type of rate, as long as you were doing so with that formula that existed prior to November of 2010. Proposition 26 broadened the definition of a tax, and now it's basically—it's a tax unless it's not a tax. And what I mean by that is that any levy, charge, or exaction is a tax unless it falls within seven exemptions within Proposition 26. And I'll get into the one that is applicable to the electric rate structure. That's called the services or products exception, and it applies to any charge imposed for a specific government service or product. And so electric rates is the provision of a government service or product directly to the payer that is not provided to those not charged, and we'll get into that in a second, and which does not exceed the reasonable cost to the government of providing that product. Okay, so if we fall within this exception, then a vote of the people is now required, and it's our view that we do fall within this exception. Okay, so again, I'll go through these different elements of this particular exemption. This is a charge that's imposed for a government service or product, the electric rate itself, and it's provided directly to the payer. In order to qualify for this exemption, and Mr. Zavos has raised this issue before, it has to be a service that is not provided to those not charged. And the issue—with respect to the issue of streetlights and traffic signal systems, it's likely would likely be construed as a service that's not provided to those not charged. In other words, it's a general fund type of service that's not charged to the rate payers, or is charged to the rate payers, it's not charged to the people not paying the rates. And so—and there's simple solutions to this. The most easily identifiable is that we can continue to pay for those particular services if we use non-rate revenues. So the utility, in addition to the revenues it generates from electric rates, also has rates such as wholesale rates that it can use to cover this particular cost. And so if—at the time that we move forward, when we do move forward, at some point in the future, that would be the likely source of continued payment of those. Obviously, the other sources, the city's general fund could pick up that particular And the third element is that this exception applies if it does not exceed the reasonable cost of providing the service. And this is—the formula we already are aware of with respect to Proposition 218. So when we go through water rate increase, when we went through the water rate increase, we had a study prepared to show that those rate increases were not going to exceed the cost to the utility to provide the water. Okay, so the issue that has been raised, and I'll get into Redding in a little bit, the issue that has been raised is that because we have the transfer, the argument is that we are paying for—if we increase the rates, we will be paying—those rates will be paying for services—for general fund services, essentially. And therefore, it would exceed the cost to provide electric service, because we're providing additional services as well. And the view that's been held by many, and it's held by us, is that because the electric transfer is a pre-existing charge that exists within the charter, and as long as we don't exceed that 25 percent number, then that particular transfer will not trigger a Proposition 26 election. So Redding is the first city that has had to deal with this. They have, unlike a direct transfer, they have a payment in lieu of taxes, which is, for all intents and purposes, the equivalent of a transfer. And so they were sued, and there were two particular challenges. One was to the rate increase itself, because, again, some of those rate proceeds, at the end of the day, were used for that pre-existing transfer. And I would note, in their case, they didn't even have a charter provision or an ordinance. They had a resolution that had been adopted prior to Proposition 26, which the court ultimately held was a valid pre-existing obligation. The second component of that lawsuit was a challenge to the post-Proposition 26 budget. So they—the City of Redding City Council adopted a budget after Prop 26 was adopted, and it included the transfer. Although that transferring amount did not go up, it stayed static. So again, as has been argued here before, and also in the community meetings, the argument is that the electric rate structure would not be necessary, the electric rate increases would not be necessary but for the transfer, and that—the city in that case argued that the transfer was grandfathered.
So it sounds like the arguments against their transfer and against their rate increase were very similar, if not identical, to the charges.
In my view, yes, very similar. And the only distinction, again, it was a payment in lieu versus a direct transfer, but from—for purposes of this discussion, I think it's immaterial. So that court—that case went to trial, and it was—again, it was handled in two phases. The court ruled that Prop 26 did not apply to the rate increase, because the rate increase, again, did not affect the transfer. So it was not increasing the transfer, it was not in any way modifying it, it was just increasing the rates based on the determination with their transfer and the increased cost to the utility. They could increase their rates based on those increased costs, and the transfer itself could remain static. Court specifically held that Proposition 26 is not retroactive, even has applied to post-Prop 26 legislation that reauthorizes the non-cost components of the rates. In other words, you're increasing the rates, you're continuing the non-cost component of it as existed prior to Prop 26, and that's legitimate. With respect to the second phase, again, this was specifically whether a budget resolution triggered Prop 26. And the court held that the transfer was an existing component of the budget, and therefore wasn't a tax, and that the transfer could reasonably be considered a cost of the electric service, because it was imposed on the utility prior to Prop 26. So interesting that—this was addressed by the court near the end of the opinion, but made some additional comments that I think are pertinent to our discussion here. And the court said, look, even if the pilot or the transfer or part of the utility rates were charged to rate payers, it's reasonable to contend that the pilot is part of the cost of providing that service. All business enterprises have costs and expenses that are—the cost of doing business, including taxes and all other items that constitute overhead. So in other words, a private utility would have to pay property tax, would have to pay perhaps a franchise fee, other fees, and it's very similar. And so requiring the city to put its electric rates out to vote every time that a rate increase is necessary cannot reasonably be deemed to be an intended consequence of Proposition 26. So how does that apply to this situation, and how does that affect our view of a rate increase requirements of Prop 26? Again, the transfer requirement predates Proposition 26, and by the transfer requirement, I'm talking about the charter provision, which was, you know, implemented by the voters decades ago. The transfer is a grandfather cost of the utility, and so as long as we're not impacting or increasing that transfer beyond what the charter requires, and we wouldn't be able to do that anyway, then our view is that it'd be grandfather cost, and we will not trigger Prop 26. Again, one of the things I think is important, this was raised by the city's attorneys in the case, and I think it will be litigated in this case and in future cases, is that they treat the transfer as a cost of service, because it's in their charter, or it's in our charter. In their case, it was in a resolution, and the court held that's a legitimate cost of service. I'm not sure accountants would agree, but I think from a legal perspective, you can treat that as a cost of service. Although, again, the primary focus here is that this particular charge is grandfathered. And then, again, the street and traffic signal service must be funded through non-rate revenues or must be accounted for in some other method beyond electric rates. And so at the end of the day, our conclusion is that no votes can be required to increase electric rates, notwithstanding the fact that we have a transfer that is used for general fund purposes. So that's our conclusion with respect to Proposition 26. I'd be happy to answer any questions as it relates to that particular issue.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question regarding the Article 11. When was that passed? When was that voted on?
I'd have to pull my charter. The charter provision on the transfer? It goes back to the '40s. I have my charter for that. I can go back and review it, get the exact date.
And that was voted on by the residents of Glendale?
Certainly.
'40s. So what do we have going on there? World War II going on? Perhaps a sense of a greater commitment to the community as a whole? Clearly, I think the residents were aware that by making the transfer, their rates would be a little bit higher than if the transfer was not made.
Certainly. And it could be that the—
I think so.
The utility had—
And I think it says something about the residents of Glendale, and they call it the—I wasn't around then, I know Mr. Weaver was a young lad.
Yes.
The greatest generation.
Not that young, not that young.
You know, they talk about the greatest generation, but what that tells me about the residents of Glendale at that point is that they were willing to submit and to transfer funds from a utility to be placed to the general fund, where it can be used for the entire community, for things like policing, fire, libraries, and other things like that.
I sure was.
And it's just interesting. I mean, when I think back, and, you know, people say why, you know, how Glendale has changed, perhaps what I'm hearing most recently is a clamoring that there's less concern about the city as a whole, and more concern about their individual pocketbooks, the few dollars that a rate increase would indicate, or if the transfer were eliminated entirely, the few dollars that they would save per month. And I'm wondering if there's any discussion on that in the news press archives or anywhere else? Because I have a hunch that that's probably what people were voting on and thinking on.
We could certainly try to, in addition, pull that information. The one thing I would add is, by its nature, an enterprise fund is a fund—is a operation that can raise enough revenues to not only operate itself, but provide a reasonable rate of return for the investors of that particular operation, being the city.
And the voters could have said, no, we don't want to mandate a 25 percent transfer. And clearly, that would have put more money in the utility itself that would be used either for infrastructure or rate reduction, rate subsidy at the time. So I think that really goes—you know, as we talk about all these things, and why are we doing it? Why is the council doing it? Well, this is something that really reflects the wishes of the good residents of Glendale when this was voted on in the '40s. And maybe we've changed. Maybe, you know, maybe businesses have changed, and they're more concerned about individualism. Maybe residents have changed, and they've sort of lost that sense of community, and they just sort of picture us being part of this mass of the LA basin. But I think that goes a lot to say—it goes far to explain how the residents of Glendale were thinking when this particular charter amendment was put forth and passed. So that's just a reflection that I had.
Well, but in fact, Mr. Najarian, the overwhelming majority, and I do mean the overwhelming majority of the residents that I've talked to, when you talk to them about the transfer, they understand exactly why we transfer money from our enterprise, which is the utility, and thank God we have it. You saw Southern Cal Edison and those communities that don't have their own utilities. They're totally in agreement that we transfer money for the other services in this city that don't pay for themselves. So that's all I can say. The overall—I'll repeat it. The overwhelming majority of the people that I have talked to about this transfer understand and agree that it's a good idea.
Well, Mr. Najarian had made an interesting point a few weeks ago that hadn't occurred to me until he said it, which was that a lot of cities, you know, it's rare that a city has its own utility, its own power utility. Most commonly, they contract out with Edison or, you know, another private company. And the reason they do that is because they get a license fee, they get a franchise fee, they get paid. So they get whatever that money is, maybe, you know, we're transferring about $20 million, maybe they get $20 million a year. Well, in those cities, that money is coming out of the rate payer's pocket. It's not like that—it's not that Edison's taking that money out of their shareholders' pockets, or they're not—you know, they're—not only are they taking that money out of the rate payers, but then they're also taking additional money from the rate payers to pay their shareholders, because they're for-profit companies. The benefit of having a public utility is that you can have that enterprise fund, or not, some don't, most do. I haven't talked to a city yet that doesn't have a transfer from their electric side. I don't know if they exist, they might, but I haven't met one yet. But the benefit is that then you don't have that portion that goes into the shareholders. It all can kind of either go into the utility or go back to the city's general fund as an enterprise. So the idea that if you're with Edison, you're not—you know, that your rate payer's not paying for something similar is wrong. I mean, any city that has Edison has this equivalent of a transfer through their franchise fee, plus they lose additional money that's going to the for-profit part of that company. So it just—it was interesting for me to think about those comparative models of public versus private, and what a city gives up for having a private utility. What they gain, of course, is that the council doesn't have to sit here and make these hard decisions. It's made by Edison, and the public doesn't really have that kind of an input into how the rates are set. They have some input, but they don't have this kind of direct input. They certainly don't vote for the people who make those decisions. So just interesting to think about the different models. Now, Mr. Mayor, do you want comments about the whole—
I was going to say, just to follow up on your comments, they—and then if you look at the graphs, they get to pay more money for their electrical charges. At least residents get to pay more money with the investment utilities, PG&E in the north and Southern Cal Edison in the central. Well, let's hear from the speakers, and then we'll do the final comments. I have three speakers, Harry Zavos, followed by Mike Mohill.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a citizen of Glendale, and the written memo of the city attorney, I believe, misstates my position as well as the charter. Three minutes doesn't allow me to unpack all those misstatements, just— Three minutes doesn't allow me to unpack all those misstatements, just witness how long it took for the presentation. But for those who are interested, you can go to www.orggc.org/harry.pdf, and you will find a document there that I've prepared. Part one of the document is a three-page analysis of the transfer issue. Part two is a one and one-eighth page analysis of the vote issue, and part three consists of exhibits, mainly city documents, which are support, which support parts one and two. You can take the time to carefully read that document, and then you can decide for yourself who is right on the issues. In the time remaining, I'll point out some of the confusions in the city's position that are elaborated on in that document. The charter creates an electrical revenue fund, which is a repository of all electrical receipts. It also dictates how monies can be dispersed from that repository of all electrical receipts. If you go to part three of my document and look at exhibit Roman numeral D, Roman numeral 1D, you will see that the city disperses electrical receipts directly from the revenue fund to the general fund. But nowhere does the charter authorizes such a disbursement. The 25% figure cited by the city attorney is the measure of the maximum amount of monies in the GWP surplus fund, not the revenue fund, that can be transferred for other than GWP uses. And the charter is clear that the amount of electrical receipts that can go from the revenue fund to that surplus fund is the excess, the surplus left at the end of the year, if any, the charter's words, not mine, after all budgeted appropriations have been taken care of. That's why it has to take place at the end of the year. That's the only time that you can determine whether you do have an excess or a surplus. What can go to the revenue fund? From the revenue fund to the surplus fund is the excess and not a specific budgeted amount. Finally, the charter dictates that the transfer from the surplus fund go to a revolving credit fund that advances cash to other city funds pending collection of taxes. And with one exception, those advancements must be returned to the credit fund. In conflict with this provision, and in conflict with Article 11, Section 14's charter prescription, the GWP be precluded from going to the general fund, the city nevertheless makes the transfer to the general fund. Again, you can check these, along with the text of the sections that I've referred to, by going to www.orggc.org/harry.pdf. Thank you, Mayor.
Mike Mohill, followed by Dennis Di Pietro.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Quintero and fellow citizens. I'd like to talk about the smart meters. This was reported in the Glendale News Press on Saturday. It shows, sorry, sir, it's the city plan. It's to monitor your power supply, and it says smart meter. I put in the word smart meter because you're not able to read the little chart up there. The other cartoon shows, it says, "Sorry, sir, it's the city plan for you to pony up the bill." Again, smart meters. I think the cartoonist said a lot when he talked about the smart meters, because it was initially going to be $28 million. In fact, if you show the second slide already, would you please? This is, and let the viewing audience see it also. On the 21st of July, 2009, Councilmember's item number E, it shows that Itron, $28 million, okay, was allocated for the smart meters, and $5 million for contingency, and $400,000 for optional wireless background. And it was moved by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mrs. Friedman, and yes, by Draymond Friedman, Najarian, Weaver, and Mr. Quintero. I bring this up because a few months later, this item, I was talking about it because I was upset of this whole thing, because why couldn't we put this as a moratorium? And I asked all the council people if you had approved it, and everyone said yes, except Mrs. Friedman. She said no. I remember that night, ma'am.
I'm sorry. You're saying that I said that I voted no on this item?
Yes, you did.
No, I think you're mistaken.
I have, I'll, that's why I went to the document, ma'am, to see if you did vote on it, and I have it right here. I wouldn't be bringing this up now. I'm sorry, okay? The issue right now is, it's now $70 million for a smart meter, and we're supposed to, we need another $10 million. And this is called mismanagement by the city council and the GWP. And this is why the city needs more money. And we will be getting an electric rate increase. It's not, it's not today. It's a matter of not, it's not when, it's, it will be if, it will be here, because the city needs the money to pay for the mistakes they've made in the infrastructure of smart meters. Smart meters were good, maybe, but we were in a recession. We could have had a moratorium, put it off when the economy was better, but nobody talks about making it a different day. We keep going on and keep spending the money, the money, and money, and now we need $10 million and still counting, and people are unemployed, about 20,000, 20% in this city are unemployed. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Dennis Di Pietro.
I know it's late, so I'll try to be brief.
You have three minutes, Mr. Di Pietro. Use all three minutes, please.
Thank you. And city council members, I am Dennis Di Pietro, and I'm representing the Chamber of Commerce as its current board chair. You have all received a copy of our president and CEO Judy Kendall's August 8th letter to Mr. Zern stating the chamber's rationale and position opposing any electricity rate increases, and also stating the chamber's desire to meet at any time regarding this issue. Among the points made in Judy's position letter are three that deserve to be restated. First, and most importantly this evening, the chamber greatly appreciates the progress, the process by which Mr. Ochoa and Mr. Zern and the GWP staff presented this electricity issue, and the general outreach to the community and the specific outreach to chamber members. And Judy Kendall and the staff disseminated much of that information to the members electronically. Second, since rate scenarios have been presented this evening, despite the resiliency of the Glendale business community in this significantly stagnant economy, coupled with increases in other utility rates and looming additional rates of cost due to impending regulation, it makes electrical rate increases an excessive burden, and for some businesses, simply unsustainable. And third, as is exemplified, on a positive note, as is exemplified in the significance of Glendale being named a finalist in the 2012 Most Business Friendly City in Los Angeles Award, a significant solution to our public sector revenue is to continue to simplify, permit processes, eliminate needless regulation, and better empower those in the city to assist business and development to grow, to stay, and to relocate into Glendale. Imagine the utility usage and revenue generated by just the absorption of the 1,450,000 square feet of available office space and the 650,000 square feet of available retail space. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Di Pietro, I have a question for you. Would you prefer that the city council consider a business license tax for Glendale?
No, we wouldn't.
Well, we're only one of two or three cities in all Southern California that doesn't have it. It would generate $3, $4, $5 million. This rate increase in electrical may be a million. So, when you say it's hurting businesses, I wonder how many businesses will leave Glendale and go to a city where there is a business license tax?
And you raise a good point, Councilman Weaver. The importance for Glendale businesses is that Glendale has been a very business-friendly city, and Glendale business has supported greatly in taxation the lifestyle that has been enjoyed here in the city of Glendale. So, we understand we ought to pay our fair share, but it is, as you say, a very complex issue, and we understand that there are very complex decisions that U.S. city council people have to make.
That's right.
We all have to make it. We're all sharing the effectiveness.
That's exactly right.
So, and what we're saying is, we're glad to discuss this at length with all of you to present the city, the businesses' point of view on this.
We've had a lot of discussion already on this.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Comments or questions, if you still have any?
Yeah, first, I just wanted to address Mr. Mohill's comment, because I think he's a little confused about something. I never said that I voted against any smart meter project, because I haven't, for the record. As far as I remember, I voted yes for everything that's come in front of us about the smart meter. I voted for that project consistently, so I would never have said that I didn't vote for it. But what I may have said was that that project was an ongoing project when I came into council. I think the vote he mentioned was in April, April, May. I was elected in March. By the time I came into council, smart meter was moving forward. It was, and that I have said, that was a, it was a moving train when I came into council. I was not here for the initial discussions about smart meter. So, I think that's why he might be a little confused. But I have absolutely supported that project every time it's come up for a vote in front of this council. But I just wanted to, just to clear up that confusion before we move forward with our comments. And I think Mr. Weaver, he was sort of waving, so if you want to comment first, that's fine.
Go ahead, Ms. Weaver.
This is one of those where, again, make sure I said what I want to say. I wrote my comments down. I believe the city staff has done more in terms of outreach to the community on this item than has been done just about any other issue that we've had in Glendale in my time here. We had a turnout of 149 people at six public meetings, most being 39 meetings at the Armenian National Committee meeting, and 32 at the police community room. Remember going to the Spar Heights Community Center for one discussion on the road diet test? Road, the room had a greater attendance than any meeting on our utility, well over 50, and they had more than one meeting there. But the people wanted to discuss that, they turned out. A handful of residents out of 191,000 people have now expressed their concern for the transfer or the rate increase. Residents that show up here most weeks were at almost every meeting, about five of them. 106 questions were asked, 27 from those five people. That means all the rest of Glendale's population asked a total of 79 questions, or a little over 13 questions on the average of each meeting. Conclusion: The public is not concerned about the transfer or the rate increase. I've not received emails or anything on this item. On the transfer, let us understand that the only reason we are talking about this transfer today is because one person in all the city of Glendale has come forth and said what the city has been doing for decades is illegal. Handful of other individuals have come forth and joined with him, accepting his position. They have no basis other than accepting what that one individual believes. Now, we have the Glendale Water and Power Commission involved in this issue, too. The mountain has been made out of a molehill, no pun intended. For information, this city has transferred over $20 million to the general fund every year since 1994. We researched it. 20 million, every year. 1989, 1990, $6.5 million was transferred, and it stayed like that up until '94, '95, and then every year it's been over $20 million. Varying amounts were transferred from the water, the electric, capital improvement, sewer, parking, redevelopment agency, refuse disposal, and hazardous materials. What about all those transfers? Done them for years, decades. The electrical works transferred less than $10 million up until 2001. Water works transferred less than $3 million in the same period. A dramatic increase in the Glendale Water and Power since then occurred when the city council reacted, in large part, to public wishes. Things like Pacific Edison Park, brand library renovations, open space acquisitions, student resource officers, gang prevention officers, increased libraries hours, aquatic programs at the high schools, humane society increases, Maryland Orange Street garages, 37 new police officers and support staff, school crossing guards, code enforcement officers, a number of mini parks, skate park, police building, Deuce Mason Park improvements, Cerrito School, park property, Adams Square Library, Glendale Sports Complex, increase in street sweeping, reopening Spar Heights Community Center. Just some of the things that the public wanted. You wonder why we had to transfer more money? Some of those things in there, because the public wanted it. We reacted. I've tried to look at analogy for the transfer, and I think I'll skip the analogy, as it do with a family's budget. Tried to analyze where could Mr. Zawos' arguments be wrong. I won't go into it. But, Mr. Zawos, you've made your appeal before the city council, before the Water and Power Commission, and at every community forum, almost getting into a heated argument on it. You seem to believe that you, as one solitary citizen of Glendale, is right, and the city as a whole is wrong. That you should have so much time, that you should have as much time as you need, hours if needed, to try and convince us of your side of it. Courts of law have two sides on an issue, heard, and decisions either made by jury or judge. You have been heard and caused significant resources of this city to devoted to your arguments. As in the past, the city manager has stated that we will have to agree to disagree. So far as I am concerned, I have heard you, and I've heard staff and outside consultants, and I will publicly state that I disagree with your conclusions. The end. On the rate structure, without, I understand we are not talking about rates tonight. I'm just touching on the periphery. Tried to find ways to analyze this requested rate. I've tried to analyze the difference between electrical and water identification, because if you want to talk about increasing rates, if I'm sitting at home watching, I say, "Well, what am I, what's, what am I going to see if I get, if they get all this money? If they can bond and increase the, increase the rates and bond and get millions of dollars? How am I visibly going to see it?" Well, water is different than electrical. You can see water. If you don't see water flowing in a pipe, you know you don't have water. If you see corrosion in a pipe, you know you have to replace it. If you see cracks in a reservoir, you know you need to fix it. Electricity, you can't see. Electricity upgrades have to fall to the qualified experts in the field to tell you. Does a turbine have to replace? I wouldn't know, looking at it. I'm only a civil engineer. Does an electric line or transformer need to be replaced? I don't know. Possibly, I understand the upgrade of the distribution system. You've heard it here tonight. We are upgrading to a 12-volt KV system. Buys more efficiency, cost savings, reliability. System losses? Well, we've already heard. We've saved approximately $1.1 million in the lines we've already put in. Imagine when the whole system's in. How many millions are we going to receive? That also goes to maybe reduced rate increases in the future because of its efficiency, but you've got to spend the money to get there. Most of the system out there was put in, the 30s, the 40s. Has to be replaced someday. Grayson Power Plant was built in decades past. It needs upgrades of parts, but as has been said, remember during the severe winter storms last year-- But, as has been said, remember during the severe winter storms last year, power went out all over the region. Glendale was the first ones up within three days, only because we had Grayson. So for those who say, "Get rid of Grayson, let it go," oh, you're going to pay for it if you do. Rate increases that are proposed are now outrageous. I hear that people were at the meeting, asked what the rate increase was, and says, "Oh, that's not bad," and got up and left. So where is this cry that they're outrageous, they're hurting everybody? Every issue we've ever had here that increased the rate, whether it be water, or electrical, or anything, "Oh, we can't stand it. Oh, we can't have it." 16 years here, and I've heard it over and over and over. But if the council doesn't have the fortitude to make those adjustments, the increases in fees and in rates will go bankrupt. Not about to go like other cities. For those, okay, we're just going to add the fact that so few people attended, say they understand and accept the rates. That's been said. And it was said in the Water and Power Commission meeting. This is what I believe, too. I refuse to kick the can down the road and leave it up for the next city council, after the election, decide on the rate increase. Now is the time to act, so I want to move ahead with the rate increase study. This is the right thing to do for this city and for all the residents and all the businesses within. Thank you.
To go next, Ms. Friedman?
Two slightly different but related topics, the transfer and the rates. So let me start first with the transfer. I think that staff did a very admirable job of making this understandable, of really breaking down the issues and showing the arguments. There's been a lot of issues raised. We've heard evolving issues, issues that started at one argument that evolved to different arguments, and I think you did a great job of tracking all of those arguments and really talking about it. And from what I've heard, I agree with the city's analysis. If anyone thinks the city is biased, remember with the water transfer, their analysis came back on the other side, that we shouldn't do the transfer, even though, as was pointed out, many other cities still do it. But we wanted to be conservative and to be sure that what we were doing operated within the bounds of the law and the bounds of the legislation, and I believe that. I think we need to always operate within the law, of course, absolutely, and within whatever legislation is emerging. And with the water transfer, the city attorney said, "Look, we think that we might be okay with this, but, you know, we're not really going to tell you that it's okay." And the city council said, "We want to be conservative. We want to be sure we're lawful, and let's not do the water transfer." So I think that we've shown that the city's attorney's office, as much as can be expected, very impartial in this case. They're not coming back just to give us what we want to hear. They're doing a real rigorous legal analysis. And to me, what it comes down to is a few things. First of all, the actual language of the transfer. And it's very important, people hear what this says. It says, "At the end of each fiscal year, an amount equal to 25% of the operating revenues of the Department of GWP for such year shall be transferred," not "might be," but "shall be transferred." And, let me see. I'm sort of, I skipped over the part about the excluding receipts part. So it says, "Of the operating revenues." It's very clear, it says, "An amount equal to 25% of the operating revenues of the Department of GWP." Well, even if the money comes out of the surplus fund, it still says that you're supposed to be transferring money from the operating revenues, not just what's left over. It's what it says. I'm quoting from the charter, and that's the language. I don't think it could be any clearer than that. Now, we haven't been doing the "shall" part, because we've been reducing the transfer from what's required of the charter every year. We've been voting to transfer less, and the charter says we shall transfer. So if anyone has an argument, that would be the bigger argument, that you're transferring less than you're supposed to. But I think the big, the big argument for me is the Redding case, which, putting aside technicalities of funds and which fund is it supposed to come out of, and things that really are less germane than, you know, this sort of, are we within what the legislation says? The Redding case was a transfer just like ours. They're trying to increase rates, and that wasn't even in their charter. That was something that happened after, as far as I understand it, after Prop 26. And the court came back and said, "No, you can raise rates and you can have a transfer." It's as simple as that. This was just last year, and I believe that it was appealed, and it was one on appeal as well.
It has been, it will be appealed, without question. The appellate ruling hasn't come down yet.
Okay. So I think that the fact that a transfer like ours, a rate increase, which we don't know if we're going to do yet, and the court said in both cases, "Yes, you can have a transfer, and yes, you can have a transfer and raise rates," and that's legal and within what the legislation determined. To me, that's very clear. The court has already made this decision. So going past the transfer, no, one last thing about the transfer. The transfer's been in place since the 1940s. Our budget has been set based on this transfer as a GWP, as an enterprise fund, making money for the benefit of the city. That $20 million, if we were to just suddenly stop that $20 million, I think we would have these chambers absolutely packed with irate citizens, wondering why, library hours are being cut, skate park isn't going to have anybody working there, all of the things the general fund pays for, many of those we would not be able to pay for. So that's, I think, what would really get people enraged. Now, we are cutting back the transfer, and we have a plan for stepping the transfer down over the next several years. So it's not that we want to continue that amount of money. We would like to bring that down so that we can put money, more money into GWP and into their capital fund and into their maintenance and all of those other needs, because clearly they do have their own financial needs and their own financial stressors. But to do that at once, I can tell you, with all of the talks that I have with people every single day in the city, that is not what the people of Glendale are clamoring for. They are not saying, "Cut $20 million of services and cut $20 million out of my quality of life in this city." I am not hearing that from anybody. So on to the rates. You know, I hear the case that GWP has laid out, and it's a real case, and it's a compelling case, and there are definitely advantages to spending money on modernization. But my concern is that we have a department that is truly in flux, where we have removed not only the general manager, but two of the senior managers of that, of GWP, and really are transitioning to an entirely new, a new department in a lot of different ways. And I feel like I would be more comfortable discussing a rate increase when Mr. Zern has been there more than 60 days, when we know how the reorganization is affecting that department, when he's had time to really analyze all of the operations of the department, because I feel like there's so much transition right now that the public really has to have its trust in GWP there to really buy onto a rate increase. That's my concern. And I don't know what that date is. I don't know if it's a month. I don't know if it's next year. I really don't know. I mean, I'm very torn, because on the one hand, I think that a lot of these capital improvements are necessary, will pay a benefit to the city. Mr. Weaver makes a very good argument about not kicking the can down the road. At the same time, we have what's basically a new department, a new head, a new philosophy, perhaps, and I would like to see how that's panning out. And yes, right now in this economy, even though it's maybe only a dollar or $2, I don't think that we can underestimate what that dollar or $2 means to some people. Many of our residents, they won't notice. They won't notice it at all. But there are other residents that will definitely notice it, and it's those incremental charges with water rates going up, electric rates going up, rates you pay for. Gasoline's gone up 40 cents, I think, in the last two weeks. And all of that adds up to hit people's pocketbook at a time when we have people that are unemployed, on unemployment, welfare's more difficult to get, rents are going up. I just read today that rents are going up in Los Angeles. So that's a concern as well, and it's a real concern of mine. Now, just in terms of Smart Grid, because that keeps coming back, I think one of the things that GWP in the past has not done so well, that I would like to see the new regime do, is communicate, and communicate with the people. And what I hear from the public is a lot of confusion over what Smart Grid is about. How does it benefit them? Is it just a waste of money, or is it something that they're going to start seeing a return in their pocketbook? And even though I came into Smart Grid after it was already rolling, I have supported the project. And the reason I have is because I've seen the financial analysis that says that within six to 10 years, you pay all that money back and you start then saving money. And to me, if that's true, and I think time will tell, that's a good investment. Plus, as we're about to see with the gas company, everyone's kind of doing the Smart Grid thing, and, you know, the whole country will transform to Smart Grid. And if we didn't do it last year, we would have, we'll be doing it in five years, but the difference was that in the last couple of years, we got a big chunk of money from the federal government to be one of the first ones to do it. So if we had said, "No, sorry, we're not going to do it. We're not going to take that stimulus money," we might be regretting that in five years or 10 years, when everyone has switched to Smart Grid. Because to, from my understanding, to be efficient, to be, to power electric cars, to do all of the things that the new appliances are designed to do, you really have to have this grid in place. And it's like someone, like one of the engineers said, "It's not really about the meters. It's about that whole system, and about the whole system being efficient and saving money, and that's where the savings then come back to the ratepayer." And that's where you don't take, you take your political commentary from comic writers with some grain of salt, because if they think it's about just being able to bill people more efficiently, then, with all due respect to Mr. Ring, who I, and I love his editorial comics, I think he also was not so educated about what this project's really about, and that's our fault. That's council's fault, that's the city's fault, and then it's GWP's fault. We need to do a better job communicating, and I'd like us to communicate better about smart meter. How people can use it, how it works, is it running? I get these questions all the time from people, and we don't have an easy, we haven't found an easy way of educating them. So that's, smart meter's a bit of an aside, it's a bit off-topic tonight, but it's been brought up a few times, so it's something that I hope that we can do a better job with, as well as all of our communications. And I think that Mr. Zern and his staff have done that, have really shown their desire to do that with this round of meetings that they've had. I've never seen GWP go out and do this kind of, of real outreach to the public, and I think it's very appreciated by the public, and I'm glad that the chamber and other groups participated and worked on the advisory group, and all the people who participated, I thank all of them, and of course, the GWP Commission, and we will continue that. I'd like to see GWP continue that kind of outreach, and I think that under Mr. Zern's helmet, it will.
Senator Jerry.
Thank you. I'm going to be relatively brief. With regard to the electric transfer, I cannot accept the public speaker's argument that the 25% shall only come from what is transferred into the surplus fund. That is not what the charter says. The charter is clear in its definition of what source the amount is that the 25% will be calculated from. As Ms. Friedman read, I think it bears repeating, that the, that an amount equal to 25% of the operating revenues of the department shall be transferred. Operating revenues. Operating revenues is how much money you get in. It's not what's left over after you pay your expenses. I think Mr. Zavos's, a large part of his argument is based on the fact that the 25% is being calculated from the wrong amount. It can only be the amount that comes into the surplus fund. I, I mean, the polite way is saying that we agree to disagree. Another way of saying that is, "I think he's wrong." He would, you know, the plain language, the plain language of the charter rules. Now, if there's any further ambiguities later on, that's an issue, maybe, that should be dealt with, the cleanup language, when we talk about the different funds and what they're called and all that. But the, in my opinion, the amount that is potentially transferable is clear. It's 25% of the operating revenues. But let's not talk about this in the abstract, folks. We're saying, "Oh, no transfer." And it's easy to say, "No transfer. Stop the transfer." "Oh, and our rates will go down, and you shouldn't have to have the increase." We should not speak about this in the abstract. And I'm going to ask the city attorney, the city manager, to give me a memo that if we immediately ceased a transfer of $20 million in this year's budget, what that would mean, and let's distribute that evenly and fairly across all departments. We should not, and I don't, I think we have to do it this way. We can't spare the police and fire. And tell us what that means. How many fire stations would have to be closed? How many police officers would have to go out? How many hours a week the library could stay open? I just would like to know that, because in the end, that's what the advocates for the no transfer are saying. And put a little footnote and say, "We can't wave our magic wand and stop the payment of our obligations towards pensions and towards salaries." That's something that is contractual and cannot be done unilateral. So let's see what this really means. Just go right down each department, there's a lot of departments, what that would mean. Because I would like to know that, and I'm guessing it would maybe mean closing a fire station. I don't know what it would do to the police department. I know those are our two largest budget components.
But you're looking at about a 12% to 13% reduction for all those general fund departments right here, right now, on the heels of what you've done over the last four years.
Right. Cut some more. Take it out and just make an, you know, make an exercise in surgery, if you will, cutting those things out. Because we can't talk about this in the abstract. We have to see what it really means. And I think that that's what the people of Glendale who voted for the charter, the transfer, in 1941, '42, had in mind. The next item regarding the rate increase and the Proposition 26, I think the Redding case says it all. We really shouldn't be arguing it anymore unless there's a court of appeal that overturns it, or a Supreme Court decision, or something at the national level. That is the law. What we were doing is grandfathered, and to continue to discuss it week after week, week after week, I think is improper. We are abiding by the laws as the current state of law exists regarding this issue, the rates and the transfer. This isn't a, this isn't a law school class where you get to argue something weeks and weeks, and it's all in the abstract. This is, this is real life. People's lives are at stake. The credibility and the stability of our municipality is at stake, and to continue to argue something that is settled in the courts of California doesn't do us any good, merely inflames the issue.
Well, once again, I think the staff did an excellent job on the outreach. And overall, I would say, in my estimation, that the utility, Glendale Water and Power, is in good shape. I think it's pay-as-you-go, and basically, that's what we've done for a number of years. I think it's worth, since my election, I, you know, I've literally approved tens of millions of dollars in infrastructure, both on the electrical and the water side, and I think it shows the chart that was shown in terms of the tens of millions of dollars that we've done to upgrade, to upgrade the transmission system, et cetera. It doesn't, it didn't talk about so many of the other moves that we've made in renewable energy, as well as buying a part of the plant in Burbank, part of that electrical plant, the money that we spent at Grayson to update our Peker units. Those were tens of millions of dollars in infrastructure. So the idea that somehow this utility is in horrible shape, and if we don't do something tomorrow, that, or if we stop the transfer, that somehow it's going to fall apart, it just doesn't make any sense. I've got total confidence in Mr. Zern. I've worked with him for many years since my election, and I know his track record. I know what he's done at Public Works. And along with the two managers that are present here this evening, I think we've got a great staff in place, and I think they're going to be able to send the utility, put the utility, take it to another level in terms of efficiency and its operation. So I'm sure they're going to be able to handle the job. In terms of the rates, I'm not interested. I mentioned it in the past. I'm not interested in increasing the rates. At this point, I think it's premature. Sometime in the future, it can be approached by the city council, but as far as I'm concerned, we've gone as far as we need to go with this exercise. Any other comments? Mr. Weaver?
Comment on the motion we have, it's to give direction on the rate structure itself, because I listened to the Water and Power Because I listened to the Water and Power Commission. They said, if the council wants us to look at the rate structure, then you, Mr. Zern, would come back to them, the whole analysis, get their recommendation, and it would come back to us again on the rate structure. From what I've heard you say, you have a pretty good feel on what you would be doing with the additional dollars. And I guess we would get more detail on the urgency of doing some of these improvements. I do know, if we don't have a rate and structure, Woody and Finch are going to downgrade our bonding capability. That, I think, is very disastrous to happen. We have to keep it up if we want to have any ability to bond future. So I'd like to hear more. I'd like to get the Water and Power Commission's recommendation. Doesn't mean we're going to support it or not, but it's to get additional education on the rate structure. See nothing wrong with giving that direction as a part of this motion. But I can count there's four of us that'd take three to want to do that.
Just to be clear, I'm, I'm not interested in having them do an analysis on the rate structure at this time. I want GWP to, the new leadership at GWP, to have their time to settle in to running that department. And my hope is that we won't need a rate structure in the near future.
You will, absolutely.
Okay. I also disagree that, that the bonding would be disastrous. I don't think that's the case. Okay, so where do we leave it? Do we need a, another motion, or?
You can either note, file, or?
Page one. Okay. How about a, a motion to note and file the report?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call?
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Nukin? Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, thanks for all your hard work. You've spent a lot of time and energy on all of, everything that has been presented tonight. I know how, how much work it took on behalf of the staff and employees. Thank you very much. That includes the managers in the audience. All right, next, please.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited, time is not a part of this agenda. Speakers allowed five minutes. If council may question or respond to a speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. Same manager, mayor, for the matter to the corporate department for investigation or report.
I have one card, Mike Mohill.
I'll have two.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members, and fellow Glendaleans. My name is Mike Mohill. About two weeks ago, for the second time in a row, I told the city council and citizens of Glendale that according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, that being a firefighter was not listed as the top 20 most dangerous jobs. I was told by a councilman who just left the room that I should get my facts correct. Because in his opinion, being fire, being a firefighter was not dangerous. Correct, Mr. Weaver? Thank you. It was further stated by the same councilman that there was no correlation between the word fatality, the word used by the Bureau of Labor, and his definition of the word dangerous. Council members have access to many government forms like OSHA Form 300 and 301 that tell how many firefighter injuries and the cause of those injuries. Perhaps our council members should enlighten the public on the number of injuries we have had over the past three years only, and the cause of those injuries. Because my facts were questioned, I did some additional research as of the year 2011. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the top 10 most dangerous jobs by fatal occupational injuries were neither fire nor police officers. The top 10 dangerous jobs by fatal occupational injuries in 2011 were drivers, sales workers, and truck drivers, refuse and recycling collectors, roofers, mining machine operators, coal miners, farmers and ranchers, extraction workers. These workers examine and inspect equipment, construction sites, and work in progress, often at heavy construction projects. Also included are pilots and flight engineers, logging workers, and number one, fishing-related occupations. Two weeks ago, I was talking about dangerous jobs and the salaries and the pensions of city safety personnel. We appreciate the dedication of our firefighters and police officers. But is there no limit for their salaries and pensions? Our firefighters and police officers often have salaries in excess of $100,000 annually, and at age 50 or 55 can retire with 30 years of service, receiving a lifetime pension of 90%, and I said the word 90%, of their last years of spiked income. I didn't know our city council members were into making millionaires of our safety employees. While the folks who have to pay the bills have to work beyond the age of 65 many times, and on average receive a social security check of about $14,745 per year. Council members, is that right? As recently reported in the Daily News, Los Angeles Fire Department had 17,000, again repeating the words, 17,000 applicants for just 300 openings. Last year, Glendale Police Department had four positions and 300 applicants. I'm sure these applicants would be more than glad to have a job today, even without a city pension, and retiring with their social security and a 401K plan. Citizens of Glendale, I was also reprimanded by the same councilman for making campaign speeches as part of oral communication. Let me state, I present factual information based on legitimate and reliable sources. Every citizen of Glendale has the right to set the record straight, and I will continue to do so, to present factual, legitimate, and reliable information for the public to hear. I also like to thank Mr. Zavos for his efforts for the rate transfers from the GWP. And also, there was, Commissioner said that there was a conflict of interest between the city attorney's office and the GWP's office using the same city attorney. That's, to me, is a conflict of interest. And I think we ought to have outside counsel debate this thing called the transfer, because it is not correct. You just, you have the resources of the city of Glendale, Mr. Zavos has himself. What are you afraid of?
Margaret Hammond.
Thank you.
Followed by Harry Zavos. I'm sorry, Harry, you're first. Harry Zavos, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Let me just say a few comments. I hadn't intended to speak at oral communication, but what's transpired triggers some comments I'd like to make. The comment was made that if the transfer was discontinued, that...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not talking about the transfer. I said, I'm not going to talk about the transfer or any of that.
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Mayor, and, and...
Mr. Mayor, I know where, where Mr. Najarian's going with this, is that this item was on the agenda, and the purpose of oral communications is to speak on items not on the agenda. So it's certainly within your discretion to not permit him to speak on this particular question.
I'm not going to speak on the transfer.
No, no, it's not the transfer, it's anything that was on the agenda. So is that tired?
Not, not anything that's on the agenda.
Okay.
And you've taken up much of my time. Let me get my point out.
Gave you time, you stopped.
The, the, the comment was made that if in fact the transfer was discontinued, then budgets would have to be cut for city services. Now, the point is that the city can get increased revenue for public services. There's nothing to stop this council from going to the public and putting a revenue increase on the ballot and have those people that would be upset if those budgets were cut for those other funds to vote for an increase. There is no legal impediment to go to the people and ask the people to replace what would be lost if the electrical transfer wasn't made. That, can I go? I mean...
I think, I think it's all, again, I think it is all related to the issues that were brought up at this particular agenda item. So my suggestion is...
No, it has nothing to do with the transfer. I'm just talking about...
Again, the, the, Mr. Zavos, the transfer, the staff report, the agenda item was not just on the transfers with respect to the electric rate increase, whether the...
I'm not talking about the electric increase. I'm talking about the fact that this city can get increased revenues for anything having to do with general services by going to the people and getting a vote.
You don't have to yell, sir.
Well, you keep cutting me off and not letting me speak.
I think...
This, one of the reasons...
I'm sorry, the speaker's on order, Mr. Mayor.
Listen, you're, you have to wait now. We gave you time, you still have your five minutes.
I thought, I thought this is my time to speak.
We've given you time. You know what the rules are, Harry. You know that there not supposed to be agenda items at oral communication. You're stretching the boundary.
I am not...
We have an attorney here. Did you have a question, Mr. Najarian?
I just want to remind Mr. Zavos that this is not the GWP commission where he can make himself at home on the dais and have an unlimited number of times. That we have to run the meeting, and you're doing a very good job of running the meeting, Mr. Mayor.
I have one.
Why, why am I being interrupted, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, keep going.
I think...
Keep going.
I just want to know if I can speak here, or whether...
Well, I thought that we had oral...
No, you're...
Okay, I can't speak.
No, you can't. I'm going to give you a chance to do your five minutes. Go ahead, Mr. Najarian.
Again, the, the point is for oral communications, is for speakers to address any subject not on the agenda. And all, up to this point, everything that Mr. Zavos has been referring to is related to the agenda items and was discussed.
Yeah.
And I, for the record, I, I agree. I mean, it's, the point of oral communications is not to rebut staff or council member on something that was discussed in conjunction with an agenda items, to discuss other items that are not on the agenda or related to that agenda item that was discussed as part of, as part of the matter.
Okay. So why don't you talk about your concept of...
All right, let, let, let me go...
Let me finish, would you please? Why don't you talk about your concept of letting the public vote on higher refuse rates or whatever it is?
That's exactly what I was talking about, Mr. Mayor.
But don't tie it, don't tie it to the, to the transfer or the electric.
You know, Mr. Mayor, when this agenda item is presented, it's presented to say that the speaker can speak and the council will not respond. It's my five minutes. I had three minutes earlier. You, on that dais, can take 20 minutes after I've had my five minutes and go on and on and on, and you're begrudging me my five minutes. And the only point I was making wasn't talking about the transfers, wasn't talking about whether they're illegal, not talking about whether or not an increase in the rates had to be put on the agenda. I was simply making the point that there are other sources of revenue to the city, if it needs money for general services, other than transfers. If, there's nothing to stop the city from going to the public and saying, if the transfers are discontinued, we need to have additional revenue for these services, vote for it. And if they vote for it, the revenue will be there. Let me make a second point. Yes, I am a lone voice, and maybe people will come and agree with me. But you know, all changes start, start with a lone, a lone voice. That's what the marketplace of ideas is about. And if nobody agrees with me, I am firm in my conviction as to the soundness of what I have to say. And if many people agree with me, it doesn't necessarily make me right. And I have been willing to ask the public to go to the documents that I have put on the internet, to look for themselves what's there. And frankly, that's what this should be all about. Now, if in fact the city is apathetic, the people are apathetic, and they're, don't care about the rate increases, then fine, eventually I'll stop coming because I can't fight this battle myself. And the battle I fight is not to hurt the city. I happen to think that the city should obey the law. When I came and talked about the water transfers, I came because I felt those water transfers were in violation of the state constitution. I come here on the water, on the transfer of the electrical fees because I think it violates the fundamental law of the charter. And I think, when in fact...
Point of order, point of order, Mr. Mayor.
I'm talking about why I...
Mr. Mayor, you've admonished the speaker several times. And we're back again...
Look, the public is watching. You can decide from yourself whether or not this is an appropriate way to shut me down. And if you want to, you will, but I don't think it looks good.
But we're not shutting you down.
Well, that's what Mr. Najarian is trying to say. Aren't you admonishing me not to speak?
Mr. Mayor, all I'm saying is that when the speaker again returns to the legality of transfers, that that was an issue that was agendized, it was discussed. And for the speaker to backdoor this again and try and slip it in and then throw the cloak of victimization upon him is a total inappropriate means to address this council and to address those who may be watching. That's all I'm saying. If we don't have rules in the procedures and the process of running this meeting, then it's going to turn into chaos. Despite any one speaker's zealousness in presenting an argument, we have to stick to those, to be fair, to this speaker and every other speaker that comes before him and after him.
It's a long-established rule, Mr. Zavos.
I am not rehashing...
Time in, time in.
Go ahead. I'm not rehashing that. I'm talking about my right to come here and state my position and give the public an opportunity to check what the basis of my opinion is. That's all I'm talking about. And frankly, I will come at an oral communication, and I will, over a series of oral communications, slowly go through the charter, word for word, so that the public, not just the council here, that's why this oral communication exists, not just for the council, but also for the public that watches, and go through it, word for word, so the, step by step, so the public can follow what my reasoning is. At that point, I will no longer come before this council to repeat what I will say in the succeeding or the upcoming weeks.
All right, then you will have five minutes of uninterrupted time to do it. You can also show your, your website. And since it won't be on the agenda, it'll be five minutes of uninterrupted...
And I appreciate this, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the final...
Mayor, I don't have to stand and listen to it since the council's made a decision to agree to disagree. Why do I have to sit and listen to it, right? I can, I can go out that door.
Come in. No, no, you can't.
You can't order me to say here for that.
Have to sit here with the rest of us. Margaret Hammond, the front card.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council, staff, the audience, and so forth. My name is Margaret Hammond. I don't know what we're coming to, but I'm kind of disgusted tonight with what was going on. Unbelievable. Freedom of speech, huh? Okay. Here I go. My idea is, again, for the free bulky item pickup. There are a lot, numerous articles lying around the city again. I guess people just are not listening to me. The phone number is 818-548-3916. Please call and get the items picked up. There's pieces and bits and mattresses torn up laying around in the streets. I know where I live is the densest part of the city. 50% of the city live in that little point down at the bottom of Glendale. And it's pretty sad because there are so many people living in apartments there. Oh, Mr. Weaver, you look at the sky again. You look cute.
I am listening to you, Margaret.
Yeah, sure. Okay, National Night, I'm not going to, it's my five minutes, thank you.
Don't start making snide comments at me.
I, it's my five minutes.
If I want to look at the lights up there, there's one that's broken down.
It's my five minutes.
Yes, but don't make comments about...
Why are you talking in my five minutes? There you go again.
Mayor, tell her not to make those kind of personal comments.
Whatever. It's my five minutes.
All right, let's have some corn.
Talk on what you want, but don't talk about any council members.
It's my five minutes.
Don't talk about, okay. Go ahead, Margaret, I'm leaving.
Good.
All right. You haven't, you haven't, you haven't.
Hello, he, how much...
Margaret Coram.
Listen, okay.
Haven't lost...
I hope the people out there, no.
You haven't lost...
They, they can see what's going on.
Calm down, you haven't lost any time.
They can see what's going on.
You're back on. You're back on.
It's disgusting.
You're back on.
Um, well, after how many seconds of my time?
Oh, no, seconds of your time.
I stopped your timer and I'm restarting it. You didn't lose any time.
You haven't lost any time. From now on, when you hear me say timeout and time in, that means you're not losing any time.
Or striped shirt if you want, or red cards and yellow cards.
Okay, I am advocating mandatory ID requirement for voting. And under tpaq.net, people can go there and get the information, and we need to get this moving to have mandatory ID, whether driver's license or state issued. And I did want to, on National Night Out, we had a lot of people at that event, hundreds, and many of them from the low-income minority groups, a lot of children, and they enjoyed it very much. The police department thanked us because, thanks to Lenore Solis and her manner of commandeering volunteers from different segments, including volunteers from the Clean and Beautiful Committee, churches, not even in that area, but they do feel that it's a good idea to have that event at that park. And thanks to the Parks and Rec for, and Jesteran for helping us put on that event. Thank you. I think it's a really important event. And then on Saturday, August 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., the Glendale Historical Society is having an event at the Alex for their annual meeting and their members and guests. And you are invited, and if you would like to come, we would be very happy to have you. Thank you very much, and I just hope this display isn't going to be thought of as a way to run part of the public speaking from now on. Thank you.
Okay, any comments from the staff, Mr. Najarian?
I do. It's a great service that we provide, the free bulky item pickup. But it's really free only on one side. It's free just to the residents. Certainly, there is a cost involved in it. And I hope that as you go through our exercise in budget cutting, that there's still enough money left to maintain a program such as the free bulky item pickup. Because I think there's a lot of programs that may shock people, that are clearly enjoyed and used, that may fall to the budget acts, the $20 million budget acts, the exercise in budget reduction that I've asked you to make.
Yes, sir.
I just want people to realize that.
Any other comments? Well, I for one am just astonished that Mr. Mohill keeps insisting, insisting that firefighters and police, that that's not a dangerous job. Like I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, when that fire took place and those guys were having to climb that hillside, consider that being just as dangerous as some, what if somebody got a occupation, truck driver, flight engineer? I don't even know if flight engineers exist anymore. I think in the age of computers, maybe they have them on the long flights across the ocean. But anyway, it's just interesting, listening to him talk about how non-threatening those jobs are. Okay, to have a motion to?
Move to adjourn?
We are adjourned.